This is the July 21st, 2021, meeting of the Concord City Planning Board. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll?
Chairman Whitman?
Here.
Counselor Pierce?
Here.
Member Smithmire?
Here.
Member Hicks?
Here.
Member Fox?
Here.
Member Santa Cruz?
Here.
Member Rosenberg?
Here.
We do have a quorum. We'll open the public meeting. First item on our agenda tonight's to approve the meetings of, to approve the minutes of the June 30th, 2021 meeting. Would someone like to make a motion to approve the planning board minutes as submitted?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made in second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Those minutes pass. Our minutes will be in the book. We'll move on to item four, our agenda overview. We are going to hear everything on our agenda tonight. We do have a couple items that I think are probably of interest to the public. We've got Dakota Partners on behalf of P&amp;M Realty. There's two items on our agenda, 7E and 7F. 7E is a condominium unit, more of a procedural piece. We'll ask that a public hearing, unless there's a specific issue regarding the creation of condom, a condominium lot, you hold your public hearing information until the next item, which is item 7F, which is talking about the, the project itself. If you have a question on 7E, which is the condominium, you can feel free to ask. And I think you wanted to make a comment about 7G. Heather?
Oh, yes. I just wanted to clarify. In the article in the newspaper today, it indicated that the Vilas Project, which is on here, on Man, off Manchester, exit 13 Manchester, was seeking approval tonight, and that is not the case. I just wanted to clarify for anyone who might be in the audience for that specific project, that we will have a public hearing, but it's for a comprehensive development plan. So there's actually, no site plans have been submitted. It's a concept plan. They're not asking for approval even of the concept tonight. They've asked for staff and board feedback, which is what we're giving them, and our recommendation on that project is that we continue to, a public hearing next month. So just for clarification, that project, there, and also for clarification, the plan that appeared in the Concord Monitor was not the correct plan. So for those of you who actually went on the agenda and looked at the staff link, there's a completely different plan on there. So just for any of you who might have shown up because you saw that in the paper today, that was not the correct plan, and they are not seeking approval tonight.
But we will take all the testimony if somebody does want to speak regarding the development plan. Okay. Item five in our agenda is a design review, applications by consent. For those in the audience, consent agenda items have been reviewed by the board, have been reviewed by architectural design, and we take them as a lump sum as opposed to hearing them individually. So if anyone is here, would like to speak on items 5A, 5B, 5C, 5D, 5E, and 5F, if you could just raise your hand. If not, we will look to the board for a approval by consent. Would someone like to make a motion to approve all those applications with ADR recommendations by consent for items 5A through F?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made in second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. That moves us quickly to item six on our agenda for our public hearing section. If we could read item 6A into the record?
Bank or Savings Bank requests ADR approval for the replacement of an awning at 82 North Main Street in the Central Business Performance District. This did go to ADR. I believe they had a positive recommendation, and there was a license agreement that went to council that was also approved.
Okay. So this is just a canopy replacement. They're having problems, I think, if you guys are familiar with the 82 North Main Street project. We saw our couple years ago. They have glass inserts on the canopy at the top, and they're having some issues with them. They're going to be putting in Luvert, I believe Luvert, right? Okay, Luvert inserts on the top. Public hearing on this?
Yes.
Okay. We'll open the public hearing. Any member of the audience wish to address this application? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Someone like to make a motion to, oh, sorry. So we don't have a recommendation, a staff recommendation on this, right?
Yeah, we don't typically do a report for them, but we just let you know that ADR was, was in favor.
So ADR was in favor. Someone like to make a motion to approve this replacement of the awning at 82 North Main Street as outlined in your packet?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's made in second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. That moves us on to item 6B in our agenda. Could we read that into the record?
Harlan Hutchinson requests ADR approval for the replacement of an internally illuminated wall sign and internally illuminated freestanding panel sign at 89 Fort Eddie Road in the Gateway Performance District. I believe ADR also recommended approval of this. We simply pulled it because the sign was installed.
And we'll duly note that there's only one installed sign that's been pulled off this month. So staff's doing a great job of finding these and, and seeking them out. Is the applicant here?
Oh, can I, can I follow?
Yep, go ahead.
I will also just note that the, the change that we had made recently about the fees, the daily fee, was passed by council on the same day that this sign went up, and the person was notified, and they immediately came in and filed the application. So they were simply charged the regular fee for not submitting in time, but they were not charged the daily fee for, because that had, that had just been passed that day.
Twenty-five dollars a day.
Correct.
Should be higher.
It should be, but it's a good start.
Good start.
Baby steps.
Baby steps, yeah.
So someone like to make a motion to approve item 6B, the sign for Harlan Hutchinson on 89 Fort Eddie Road in the Gateway Performance District as outlined in your packet?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made in second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Moves us to item seven in our agenda. If we could read item 7A into the record?
Bowler Engineering on behalf of Atlantic Broadband requests minor site plan approval for the installation of new telecommunications equipment and a conditional use permit for installation of 2,500 square feet of impervious area in the Aquifer Protection District at 264 and 268 Sheep Davis Road in the Gateway Performance District. Staff does recommend that this application be determined complete, also determine the development of regional impact, and that the public hearing be opened.
Okay. So we have a determination to completeness component. Would someone like to make a motion to find the application complete and open public hearing, and not recognizing that it's not a development of regional impact?
No, it is.
It is.
It is a development.
And it is a development of regional impact.
Because it's an Aquifer, Pembroke's, well, I'm sure.
Oh, Pembroke, Aquifer.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's made in second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. That motion carries. Public hearing is open. For those of you in the audience, we don't usually move along this fast, so now we can, we can slow things down a little bit. So we'll, we'll welcome you to the table. If you could state your name for the record?
Thank you. Hi, yes. My name's Josh Swirling. I'm a professional engineer with Bowler Engineering here on behalf of Atlantic Broadband. Also with me tonight is Gary Sandler with Upland Architects and Jeff Drapo with Atlantic Broadband, if you have any questions relative to the operations.
Okay. If we could get a quick staff update on this, on this project?
Sure. So this is a, a development of regional impacts. Both the Regional Planning Commission and the Town of Pembroke were notified. This went to the Pembroke Planning Board meeting on the 13th. The Town of Pembroke had no comments. The Planning Commission had no comments. There are two CUPs requested, one for the additional impervious coverage in the Aquifer Protection District, as well as a reduction in the required driveway width. Staff is supportive of the driveway width reduction simply because there are very few trips expected. This is going to be an unmanned public utility building. ADR did have some comments on the building design, and the applicant has responded, addressing those comments to make the colors of the building and the fence more muted.
Okay. And I see you signed in. Very good. Thank you very much. If you could just give us a quick overview of the project?
Sure, yes. So the project is a very small development. It's basically a 900-square-foot building on two parcels of land. Both will be owned by Atlantic Broadband at the conclusion of the entitlement process and prior to construction. I believe you all have packets that depict this plan, which is basically a driveway coming into a fenced-in area with a, with two parking spaces and the 924-square-foot building. Yes?
We, you can use that screen right there if you would like to bring it up on the screen, and we also have a pointer. Oh, there's no signal?
No.
After we correct the technical difficulties.
If, if you need me to, I can continue.
Yep, no, go ahead. Continue on.
Describing the project as we, as we work on the technical piece. But I think it's a, it's a very simple project. We had shown a 15-foot-wide driveway coming into the property. Through discussions with town staff, we agreed that 18-foot would be fine. There had been a reduction in impervious when we look at the removal of two existing buildings, gravel driveway servicing the, the larger parcel. This is very good.
Don't jinx me. I have to keep the plan open yet.
So a reduction in impervious there.
How's that?
Wonderful. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. So these are the two lots that I was just describing. We have river located to the east of the project. These are the buildings that will be demolished. This is the gravel driveway that will be demolished. And as you can see from the proposed site plan, the building will be located on the smaller of the two lots. Driveway will be basically reusing the existing drive location for one of these horseshoe drives. Oh, okay. You're all able to see my cursor here, right?
Yeah, we can.
Okay, great.
Just in case.
Terrific. Thank you. So really, it's a pretty benign development. It's an unmanned facility. The facility will require electric service, obviously telecommunications. This is not like a wireless development. This is Atlantic Broadband. It's a cable facility. They'll be providing public utility services, 911 services from this location as well. And through the discussions with the, I don't know that this was mentioned earlier in the staff report, but in discussions with the Architectural Design Review Board, we did agree to adjust fence color and roof color to a more earth tone, excuse me, muted tone, so it'll be kind of subdued and lost in the, in the woods out here, so to speak.
Okay. It's like a Victorian-style architecture building. ADR's recommendation. Sam, what did ADR have to say regarding the building?
Just to kind of mute the colors of the roof and the fence, and the applicant has responded and has provided updated renderings, addressing.
So in the packets are updated renderings?
I do believe so.
Okay. And fence, I see the fence in a packet as well. Is that all the way around the property?
I know.
Not around, it's not on the front. Is it visible from the street?
It's very, this building and the fence is barely going to be visible from the street given the amount of screening that exists out there.
None of that screening's going away?
Only where we need it for.
Well, other than construction, for construction.
Yeah, you can see we have basically a tree line where we're going to be carving out the area for the, for the development.
And you said there's demolishing of existing buildings that are there?
Correct.
How many, two buildings?
Two buildings.
Are they houses or?
There's a little outbuilding.
A little shed or whatever. I think it's labeled on the plan.
Correct.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Earl?
Thank you very much. I noticed from the Design Review Committee minutes, meeting minutes, it said the building will not be occupied equipment only. So I'm, I'm a little confused. Clarification. So this is an equipment-only building, just maintenance as peop, as needed? So it's not a manned or staffed office?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Any member of the audience have any questions regarding this application? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing.
We, we did request waiver. I don't know if you need me to cover.
Yep.
The waiver request.
The waivers. You covered the waivers, right?
Yeah, just to update, we do have a provision in our site plan regs that when there is a development on a road that does not have sidewalks existing, that sidewalks be constructed or the city collect escrow funds to construct in the future. Staff has not made a recommendation one way or another, but currently on Sheep Davis Road, there are no sidewalks at all. So that, that does present a challenge. This could potentially be constructed, and then over however many years it takes to make a connection, the sidewalk could deteriorate. Or we hold funds in escrow, and with the cost of inflation and the inflationary nature of construction costs, they would not be enough to build the sidewalk in the future. So it, it's a challenge.
And I think this is a bigger issue. I think the, you know, the, the maintenance of those sidewalks is, is the big issue. So who's going to maintain them? The city's going to maintain.
Additionally, this is a state road.
Yep.
And we would have to have a discussion with DOT. DOT does not build or maintain sidewalks. That would have to be a, a city effort.
Okay. Okay. Any questions on that topic? That's one that we face occasionally here and there, and I think we're going to get some clarification as we move along. So we've closed the public hearing. In your packet, we have waiver 3.1, which is applicants requested a waiver from Section 2102 of the Site Plan Regulations to not construct a sidewalk along the front edge of the property. The applicant states that the project will not generate a significant number of pedestrian trips, and adds that there's no current sidewalk on Sheep Davis Road. Someone like to make a motion to approve that waiver as outlined? Grant, grant that waiver as outlined, I'm sorry.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's made in second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That waiver's granted. Item, I take them out of order here. Heather?
Excuse me?
Did I take these out of order?
Oh, I don't.
Sorry.
Was there architectural time?
Yeah, there's a grant, conditional use, conditional use permit, conditional use permit, and determine whether the, grant the waiver. So we've already granted the waiver and done that. Can we do conditional use and ADR approval in one?
No, I think you should just go ahead and do the conditional use, and then you can do the.
Okay. So we've got 5.1 in our packet to grant the conditional use permit to Article 28364 for the construction of impervious area within the Aquifer Protection District, given the Conservation Commission has recommended granting the CUP in the conditions, and the applicant meet the performance standards of the Aquifer Protection District set forth in Article 28361 of the zoning ordinance. And the Town of Pembroke has no comments on the plan in the Article 2877F for the 18-foot driveway where a 20-foot width is required, given the expected load trip generation to the site. Would someone like to grant that conditional use permit as so eloquently outlined?
So.
Second.
Motion's been made in second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. We are at 5.3, which is to grant ADR approval for the building design and site layout, where there are recommendations that the color of the roof and the fence be darkened to earth tones, and those are in your packet as you saw them. Would someone like to make a motion to grant ADR approval as outlined?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made in second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. 5.4 is to grant the major site plan approval for the proposed public utility building and associated improvements at 264 to 268 Sheep Davis Road in the Gateway Performance District. It is outlined, precedent conditions one through four, and subsequent conditions one through three. Would someone like to make a motion to grant major site plan as outlined?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made in second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. You are all set?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a great night.
Good luck.
Thank you.
All right. Just on to 7B in our agenda. Could we read that into the record?
Wilcox and Barton on behalf of 3G Eagle request an amendment to a previously approved major site plan for the reconfigu, reconfiguration of the parking lot layout at 25 Henniker Street in the Industrial District. Staff does recommend this be determined complete, not a development of regional, well, it already was determined previously, not a development of reg, it was a development of regional impact, wasn't it?
It was, yes.
Yeah, development, that it is a development of regional impact, and open the public hearing.
Okay. So we have a determination to completeness component, and recognizing that it is a, a development of regional impact. Someone like to make a motion to find the application complete, a development of regional impact, and open a public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Public hearing is open. Welcome to the table. If you could sign in and state your name for the record?
Good evening. My name, let me move this real quick. By the way, my name is Erin Lambert. I'm with Wilcox and Barton. I'm here representing 3G Eagle. We were before you a couple of months ago, and since then, a couple of things have changed. There, it's an open space, and they have found a tenant that necessitated a couple of minor site plan changes. So we're here before you tonight, requesting an amendment to our site plan approval to accommodate the tenant. Since last we were here, a variance was granted for an automotive use. They will occupy Suite 1. It didn't require any changes to the site plan. However, Suite 2, they've located a tenant who is a wholesale, storage, and distribution facility, and they have some different requirements as it relates to loading docks and truck parking. So the plan before you proposes 55 parking spaces. We are still requesting a conditional use permit to defer 11 and provide 44. This is the plan that you approved a couple of months ago, and I'm going to walk through the changes. Basically, for Suite 2, we had designed overhead doors, and we had designed an alternative grading plan to convert one of those overhead doors into two loading docks with a retaining wall. However, this tenant would like to have four loading docks, so that retaining wall is shifting to the south. It doesn't increase the impervious at all. It doesn't change the drainage at all. We're adding an additional catch basin, and so all that stormwater will still be directed to the infiltration gallery. The one change that we are proposing, however, is that they, they need a place to park some trucks. The nice thing is that the wholesale, storage, and distribution requires less parking. So we're able to take these parking spaces that were across from there, and we're requesting to eliminate that landscape island. It's 380 square feet of landscaping. It was just going to be grass. It wasn't, it didn't have any plantings in it. We'd like to remove that and convert that to truck parking. So that's in this location right here. To mitigate the.
Where is it again?
I'm sorry, the red.
A red, okay.
Yeah. So it was just, there was a landscape island in between two rows of parking, and now those are going to be open for trucks to park in there. So we did, engineering asked us to look at turning movements. So we did provide engineering with turning movements to show that trucks can both back up to the loading docks, as well as access those parking spaces. To offset, oops, sorry, that's the, that's the new loading dock, excuse me, that's the new retaining wall location to accommodate the four loading docks. In order to offset that additional increase in impervious, we're proposing to add two additional trees, as well as to put shrubs in both of those landscape islands. There are already trees in the island that's on the left. The island's on the right, there is an Eversource utility pole there, and we did confirm, again with Eversource, that we can't put any trees. They're too close to it. But they did approve putting in shrubs. So those were not in our original application, but we are proposing those as part of the mitigation for eliminating that grass landscape area. So there's no changes to runoff. There's no changes to stormwater. It's really just shifting the retaining wall over to allow two more loading docks, and then converting those car parking It's really just shifting the retaining wall over to allow two more loading docks and then converting those car parking spaces to truck spaces. I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board has.
Okay, questions from the board? Jeff?
I just have one. You said it's a wholesale and distribution facility? WB40? Are they going to do smaller loads then? These aren't going to be really long tractor-trail trucks?
It will be both. It'll be WB40s and it'll also be the smaller trucks that go out and do distribution.
Okay, so it'll be smaller, as you see. What I'm saying is you're not going to see like the big tractor-trail trucks like you see behind Market Basket.
Right, no, they're not that large. Correct.
Other questions from the board? Suzanne?
Am I looking at the C14 alternative that has the, I see the truck parking. Yes.
Oh, yes, that's here.
So I guess the, and I'm not sure if staff caught this, but hardly any of the trees are shade trees. They're all understory trees?
Right, so unfortunately, all of this, let me show, the ever-source right-of-way begins here, and this is all within the ever-source easement. So the trees have a maximum height that we could put in there, so we're not allowed to have any of the large shade trees that would be preferred. So what we have in there are the largest height trees that ever-source will allow within their easement.
Well, then I guess what I would probably try to do is talk to staff about some of the selections. And that maybe some of the planting in the island is a little more substantive for a shrub and not like a ground cover. And then your planting detail is not consistent with the city details.
Okay, we will take a look at that.
It's not consistent with the city?
Nope, it's not, it's not our detail. I mean, I don't think it is, because, does it say the boot, boot ball and everything? With the wire basket? It just didn't look like a- It was hard for me to say, but anyway, just make sure that it's the city.
I will verify and make that change if it is not the current city detail.
And if, if you could use something other than a ginkgo?
We hate those.
There's so many beautiful plants. It doesn't provide really much shade or anything, and it grows painfully slow, so just pick anything.
Sure, I will relay that to the landscape architect.
Okay, any other questions from the board? Any member of the audience wish to address this application? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Thank you, Erin. You can hop back. We'll welcome you back up in a minute. Okay, anything else from staff? Any follow-up, any concerns?
We did let the planning commission and town of Pembroke know that this amendment was before us tonight, and there were no comments.
Okay, someone like to make a motion to grant the amendment to the previous approved major site plan for the proposed parking and loading area expansion and associated site improvements at 25 Henniker Street in the Industrial IN District, subject to the following conditions: precedent conditions 1 through 5, subsequent conditions 1 through 3. Would someone like to make a motion to grant that amendment?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That is all set. Let's move on to item 7C. If we could read that into the agenda?
Will Cox and Barton, on behalf of Community Bridges, request major site plan approval for the addition of 24 spaces to an existing parking lot at 162 Pembroke Road in the Industrial District. Staff does recommend the application be determined complete, not a development of regional impact, and to open the public hearing. In addition, the applicant has requested a waiver. I don't have the section off the top of my head to allow them to have the public hearing at the same time as the determination of completeness due to the size of the project.
All right, so we'll handle the determination of completeness and not a development of regional impact. So the staff determined the application complete. Would someone like to make a motion to, actually, can we do the waiver in one shot?
Let's just do that separate. It'd be better for clarity for the record.
Make a motion to determine the application complete and open the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. So we also have a waiver which allows them to conduct the public hearing on the same night. We'll determine the application complete. Would someone like to make a motion to grant that waiver and open the public hearing?
So moved.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. So we will open the public hearing and welcome to the table. Could you state your name for the record?
Good evening. My name is Erin Lambert. I'm with Will Cox and Barton. I'm here tonight representing Community Bridges.
And I'm Ann Patozak. I'm the chief executive officer for Community Bridges.
Great, so we're going to get a quick staff update on this one, if we could, and then we'll, we'll hear what you got to say.
So this is essentially a-
Yes.
I don't know if I need to recuse myself. My daughter receives services from Community Bridges.
Why don't you, why don't you go ahead and recuse if you could hop into the audience, David? That'd be great, just in case. I don't think that's an issue, but better safe than sorry. Thank you for the transparency. Go ahead, staff, sorry.
Sure, so this is essentially a parking lot expansion with some ADA upgrades. There will be a part of the sidewalk around the south side to the back of the building, some landscaping improvements. The, the thing of note is they are also requesting the same waiver as the Atlantic Broadband Project, where there are no sidewalks currently in front of this part of Pembroke Road.
Two in one night. What are the chances?
It's a lucky night.
Development on Pembroke Road and Sheep Davis Road.
That's right. So the, on this side of the street, the south side of Pembroke Road, the sidewalk terminates nearly 4,000 feet to the east, so it's quite the gap. And the sidewalk on the other side, on the north side of the street, terminates about 680 feet away. So there is still a sizable gap. This street is on the city sidewalk priority list. However, we still face the same problems where if, you know, this was constructed, there could be significant deterioration before a connection was made, and if the city holds an escrow, inflation could eat away at the value of that money before the city ever constructs a sidewalk.
And again, the city has to maintain it.
That's right.
Okay, anything else, Sam?
I'll leave it there, other than ADR was in favor of the changes.
Okay, if you could tell us a little bit about the project, Erin?
Sure. I'm going to have Ann give you a brief overview.
A little bit about Community Bridges. We have been in operation almost 40 years. We've been part of the Merrimack County area. We cover all of Merrimack County except for Hookset. We looking to take this building that we purchased two years ago and make it our home. We've rented all of those years, and now I'm finally looking to make a place to settle and the perfect place on a bus line and there's a lot of hard, hard looking in the city of Concord. So we are funded through the state and the federal government as a match system for our developmental disabilities and brain injury services. We serve over 1,000 individuals from early sports and services, the babies, all the way up to the passing of someone as an elder. Let's see, we provide training to families. One of the needs for the parking lot expansion is we do do training where we may have quite a bit of people coming into the building. And where we are now even, we've, we've expanded out on some of the property of the, the other renters on Pembroke Road when we're in the 70 Pembroke Road building. So this, this is a real necessity for us, and we have vans that we have to store as well on the property.
Thank you, Ann. So as Sam mentioned, this is predominantly a parking lot expansion. This is an existing 23,000-square-foot building. It's mostly office. They're renovating the rest of it to be office. They're really excited to move into this. It's a single-story building, and they're really excited to be owners of the building. So this is the site plan. We're located at 162 Pembroke Road. North is up the page. Let me zoom in a little bit. So the exterior improvements are predominantly to make the building ADA accessible as well as to add some additional parking, to provide adequate parking for the training that they provide to their clients. So at the entrance to the building, and we need to do a little bit of grading in the parking lot to make those parking spaces compliant, as well as rebuild the entrance to ensure that it meets ADA guidelines. And it will not have a ramp, but it will meet current grades. Then there's a door on the west elevation. It's an existing door. You currently step out, so we need to create a level landing, and we need to make this accessible. So there will be a new ramp that's put in, and we're going to designate two more parking spaces as accessible parking spaces. The building currently has a loading dock that they don't need, so we're removing the loading dock in the area in the southwest corner of the building. It allows us to provide a little bit more parking, and it also provides ADA accessibility to the rear of the building. These are the only building improvements that you'll see. In addition to closing off the loading dock, they're adding two new doors on the south elevation. These are both for accessibility. And then there's a door on the east elevation. Again, it has a step down, so we're going to put in a landing, so it's at grade, and then we're providing a sidewalk around the building, so it's fully accessible. The other, the other thing that we're doing is installing this 24-space parking lot that you see on the, the west side. This will bring the parking up to 117 parking spaces, five of which are ADA. So those both meet or exceed what's required, both by ADA and by the city's code. I'll talk a little bit about stormwater. Basically, we are capturing all of the stormwater from our new pavement as well as some from the existing pavement and directing that. We're putting a new catch basin in the existing parking lot, directing it to an underground infiltration gallery, which will be below the new parking lot. This will reduce our runoff from the site in all of the modeled storm events. The landscape plan includes-
I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry.
Are you tying in the existing parking lot to the new infiltration gallery?
We are, yeah, just because in the back of the building where we're adding that sidewalk, it's our, all of the stormwater flows south. So by capturing it there and directing it, we're able to ensure that our runoff from the site is lower.
Great, thank you.
And then the landscape plan, there are eight existing trees. We're providing 13 new trees for a total of 21 trees, which complies with the city's parking requirement for trees. As Sam mentioned, we are requesting a waiver tonight to not construct sidewalks. This section, this is a waiver to section 21.02, where sidewalks are required. As Sam mentioned, our building is located here. We're almost 700 feet from the termination of the existing sidewalk. It is on the north side of the street. There is not a sidewalk on the south side of the street for, for much further. I think it's down to Canterbury. So right now, if we were to put in that sidewalk, there are at least five utility poles that run along that side. So if we put the sidewalk in the location required by the city's standards, we'd have to relocate the utility poles, if we even could. And then the other, so as you can see, the utility poles follow a nice straight line, and if we needed to put the sidewalk in, we would likely impact those poles. The staff report from engineering indicated that we would need to provide a six-foot grass strip, and if we couldn't, we would need to put curb in. And as you'll see, there's no curb on any of Pembroke Road. So if we were needed to do that, not only would it be cost prohibitive to the project, it would really be out of keeping with, with all of Pembroke Road. So we are requesting a waiver. There are, I did speak to the five points in the letter. I'm happy to go through those, but I do believe that they were included in your packet. The last thing I just wanted to share while I'm looking at this, there is an existing ground-mounted sign. You will be, through Architectural Design Review, there will be a sign permit application in the future. When we got the survey back, we did note that this is partly in the city right-of-way. So we're currently exploring if there's an existing license. If not, we will be applying for a license at the time that we apply for a sign permit to change this over to Community Bridges logo. So that was one of staff's comments, and we are working on that. I would be happy to answer any questions that you have.
How about lighting?
Good question. We are installing new light poles in the landscape islands and around the perimeter, and then on the building, we have a light over the door on the west elevation, a couple of additional wall packs. So that has been in process since the initial submission to make sure that we have adequate coverage on the whole site. And one of the ADR comments was, in this island right here, there's an existing tree. So we did work with our lighting consultant to change the model to accurately reflect that there's a tree there. And we did make some changes to this fixture and added another one on the building to ensure we still had adequate light levels that meet the ratios that are required by the city.
Full cutoff, although-
Exactly, yep. All of these are full cutoff, respect the dark sky ordinance.
I think it's all empty lots across the street, right? There's nobody there?
There's a-
Well, down-
To the right, a little bit, there's land for sale, and then, yeah, to the left, there is a little cottage. Somebody does live there.
And then snow plowing south of the, on the south part of the lot? Is that where you're headed, everything?
Yeah, and on the site plan, we were able to show, I, we fortunately had some room for snow storage, which isn't always the case. But you'll see there's a hatch. So we do have snow storage, yes, on the, the southern portion, and then in between the parking lots and then up near the front, there is adequate place to store.
And it's a fairly flat area, right?
It is. It's fairly flat. We have well-draining soils, so all of that water, when you runoff, will infiltrate.
Heights, yep. Okay, questions from the board? Jeff?
Do you want to go first? So you mentioned you're on a bus route, and yet I don't see any connection out to the streets. Were you expecting people to be walking in the driveway with vehicles going in and out if they're coming off the bus?
They do now, in the building that we're in. On the sidewalk that's actually on that end of Pembroke Road, they have to cross a sidewalk into a parking lot.
Okay, I, I'm just concerned, and my question, I guess, is if you have somebody who needs an accessible route and they're on the bus, is the driveway grade sufficient that they can come up the driveway and get into the building without any issues?
Yeah, those, yeah, those top two.
The other one I have is if that sign is in the right-of-way. I think if there's not an existing sign agreement there, that the sign, when it's approved, should be relocated so it's outside the right-of-way. So if that's not, especially where you're going to be a long-term owner.
Okay. Earl?
I have a question for staff. What are the requirements for sidewalks relative to distance from the road? Are there any?
In terms of how the space between-
How close they are. I mean, if you look at the photos, you see the, the poles-
Looks like there's plenty of room for a sidewalk.
The poles look like they're probably 20 feet from the road. Is there room on the other side of the pole? I mean, what are the requirements for sidewalks?
We don't have a, like a specific across-the-board standard. I mean, you've seen, look downtown, they're right up against the curb and the road. In other places, we have a six- or wider foot grass strip.
And just to follow up, can you put sidewalks in a utility right-of-way?
No.
Yeah, they, I mean, you could put the sidewalk in the right-of-way, and the, the right-of-way is where the utility poles are. So it's not a utility right-of-way, so to speak. In that sense, it's the city's right-of-way where the poles are located. The property line is set pretty far back from the utility poles.
Right.
So you could provide, like, for instance, the six-foot grass strip might put you really close to the pole, but you could also provide a 12-foot grass strip and then put the sidewalk on the other side of that and, and probably still have enough room before you hit the property line. We also don't have any prohibitions against being on the private property. They would just have to give an easement for the city. So, you know, staff has, as we discussed earlier, various issues with requiring a sidewalk there, but I don't think the utility poles were really our concern. It was more about putting a sidewalk in the, where that wouldn't connect anywhere, and then general services would be expected to maintain it, and that's an odd, awkward thing for them to do when there's no connection on the other side. So there's a number of issues, but to be honest, we didn't really, the, the utility poles weren't the thing that we were super concerned about.
Okay, thank you.
I have a follow-up question about that. So the planning for sidewalks, if you are a, you purchase property that abuts property that has a sidewalk, then you're likely to have to put a sidewalk in, but if you don't purchase a property that abuts it, a different property that doesn't abut it, then you're going to get away with not putting a sidewalk in.
That's basically how it is right now. I mean, I, it, it becomes a matter of, subjectively, how big of a gap is acceptable? If it's, if there's a sidewalk, no sidewalk, and then your property, well, you know, maybe makes sense to, because then you're having a small gap, and that might be covered by the, by the CIPs that we currently have to fill gaps. So, but, you know, when you're like 6,000, you know, 600 or 1,000, when you're that far away, and it would involve redevelopment of multiple properties that aren't anywhere near redevelopment, you know, it could be decades before, and the city, you know, the city doesn't at this time have a priority, well, I won't say it has a priority, in terms of the CIP and road construction for the city to put the sidewalks in. So we talked about this quite a bit, about the pros and cons and how to handle it. We don't want it to be a situation where you just, oh, well, you, you don't, I mean, that's why there's the escrow option, but that's problematic for a number of reasons too. And we talked about some, making some changes to the ordinance to make it like a fee and lieu, and that you need pay into the CIP, a sidewalk CIP, and then that could be used to do sidewalks in the future, but at this time, it's really just problematic.
Yeah, I guess I think future planning, so if this, the properties around this property develop their sidewalk, then-
They're going to look at this and say they didn't have to.
Right.
I don't have to.
They're not going to connect.
I don't have to. And again, I think, I think a fairly big piece of it is the maintenance piece. If the city is responsible for maintenance, they got to drive down 4,000 feet to get to a little patch that nobody walks on.
I'll leave that to Earl.
Leave that to Earl. I was going to say, our beloved city council can handle that.
The city council will take care of that, yeah.
One thing to consider is not necessarily maybe directly related to this property is, you know, there could be a consideration where you build the substructure, build, if it requires curb, you put the curb, requires gravel, you put gravel, and then you low them and seed the sod. So it's not actually a sidewalk-walking surface that has to be maintained. But then if the city then wants to connect in the future, because the next parcel up or the next, scrape the loam off, come in, pave, you're there.
Be done with it, yeah.
And that starts to form those connections up and down the street, so that later on, you're not...
He's taking notes.
I like that.
And obviously, you know, there's still the idea of, you know, there's the long-term, like Sam said, you know, the deterioration potential, but at least, you're starting to build some of the infrastructure, especially in areas where there's already curb, and it may require curb and drainage to address the pieces.
So it sounds like tonight the applicants lock out.
Tonight's the applicants lock out. Make note, Aaron, and going forward. Okay, any other questions from the board? Any member of the audience have any questions regarding this application? No? Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Thank you very much for your testimony. And you guys signed in, right?
Yes.
Okay. You can step back. Thank you. Okay, so in our packet, we have 5.1 to grant ADR approval for the building design landscaping and site layout. Would someone like to make a motion to grant ADR approval as outlined?
Move approval.
Second.
Motion's made in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Good. We have a determination whether to grant the waiver of section 21.01, which is a sidewalk requirement. Someone like to make a motion to grant that waiver as outlined?
I'll make that motion.
You got a second? Anybody? I'll second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. 5.3 is to grant major site plan approval for the proposed parking and loading area expansion and associated site improvements at 162 Pembroke Road and the industrial, the IN district, subject to the following precedent conditions outlined in precedent conditions one through four, and subsequent conditions one, two, and three. Someone like to make a motion to grant major site plan approval for that project?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's made in second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Can we just make sure that the sign issue is addressed?
And the sign issue, we'll make a note of that. Staff, make a note of the sign issue regarding future signs. They do have to come back for signs. Thank you, Jeff.
Can we clarify what the motion is with the signs?
The motion is if there is an existing permit for the sign in its current location, and it is in the correct location, I'm fine with it being there. But if it's not, and they have to reapply, then they should move the sign outside the right-of-way.
Or reapply and address it.
The situation...
Address it in this forum.
Right now, the sign is not where it's required to be, and there is no license agreement. So are we making motion that as part of this application, they must relocate the sign?
That would be what I would...
Because what they are requesting is that they be allowed to keep the sign where it is, and they ask for a license agreement from the city. Well, they're going to investigate that, but I'm pretty sure that they're, that they're most likely, that's a very problematic motion to say, based on the research you do, we're either going to require you to move it, or, or keep it. What they're asking is to keep it either way, and apply for a license agreement.
Then I would, the motion would be to move it and put it on private property.
So do we handle that motion? Do we, do we put that in as part of this approval for major site plan?
Well, one thing you could do...
Or do we recognize that the sign will have to be handled separately?
One thing you could do is to make a motion to allow the sign to remain subject to acceptance or approval of a license agreement with the city.
You good with that?
Fine.
Okay, so let's add that in as part of the motion.
Yeah, where does that go?
Well, that'll come back through to licensing, so they'll have to go through licensing, and then...
So they'll basically...
It'll come back to us for approval for the sign.
I'm more in here, in this, in our motion.
I won't go in here. Well...
It's a staff comment right now, and that would be wrapped up in the precedent conditions. Okay. That's what I was asking. Thanks, Sam.
So we don't have to add a precedent or subsequent condition, right? Okay. So recognizing that, we've got a motion on the table and a second. We all good? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. You guys are all set. Thank you. Good luck. Congratulations on the new building. Moving's the hardest part, just remember that. This was easy. All right, let's move on. We'll move to item 7D on our agenda, if we could read that into the record.
TF Moran, on behalf of K RJ Finance, requests major subdivision approval for a nine condominium unit cluster subdivision at 462 Josiah Bartlett Road in the medium-density residential district. Staff previously recommended this application complete, and we now recommend that the public hearing be open.
Okay, so we'll open the public hearing. We'll welcome you to the table. If you could state your names for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening. My name is Chris Rice with TF Moran, and with me tonight is Michael Witcher of K RJ Finance LLC, who is the owner of the property and the applicant.
Great. Welcome. Let's get a quick staff update, if we can, on this project.
Sure. So when this came before us several months ago, for a determination of completeness, this was a slightly different project, in that it was a traditional nine-lot subdivision. Through conversations with city departments, this was originally going to be, and still is, a cluster subdivision. So that means that there is a certain amount of land area that's allocated for open space, and that constrains the buildable land, to some degree. And because of that, that put some constraints on how the roadway can be developed. So there were challenges in meeting city standards for roadways, and the city did not have an appetite for accepting a city street that does not meet standards. So through those discussions, it was determined that the only way to do this would be to make the road private. To have a subdivision on a private road, the lots must be land-unit condos. So the applicant had to shift from a traditional subdivision to land-unit condos, not the original intention, but that was how this would work, given the site constraints. So that is a slight change. The applicant has been able to maintain the exact configuration of those lots. They're not lots, they're land-unit condos, same road layout. There are a couple of waivers from, requested from our street construction regs for private drives, which we're in support of, because this will not be a city-accepted street. For ADR, they had a couple comments about the orientation of the buildings. They wanted to see them closer to the road, for more community feel. However, there are challenges with the septic leaching field, so that, I'll let the applicant speak more to that. They also wanted to know a little bit more about materials and colors. I understand that materials and colors, there are some limitations in supply right now, and they are custom home builders. The applicant will be able to speak more to that. But the applicant did make some changes to the driveway configurations, so that there's a turnaround in some of the driveways, and that is no longer in front of the houses, off to the side. So that would technically, would have constituted parking in the front yard, and that has been addressed.
Okay, thank you, Sam. And just recognize that the Honorable David Fox has returned to the table after accusing himself. First time we've ever called that, hasn't it? I guess we give you one of these.
I owe you one.
All right, you're welcome. All right, again, and welcome back to the table, folks. If you could just give us an overview of the project?
Sure. Thank you. As staff mentioned, we're here this evening requesting approval of a nine-unit condominium cluster development with associated open space, meeting the requirements set forth in the City of Concord zoning ordinance. The existing property is tax map 44Z, Lot 37, which is located in the RM medium-density residential district. It is approximately 12.65 acres in size, and is located directly across the street from Welcome Drive on Josiah Bartlett Road. We are butted by residential properties to the north and the south, Welcome Drive and residential properties to the west, and Sheep Davis Road, Route 106, to the south. The property address, I believe, is yet to be formally assigned, but we know it'll be between either 458 or 460. And that is because, basically, the entire area that you're looking at on this plan used to be one overall parcel, which was approximately 14.6 acres back in February of this year. There was a minor three-lot subdivision approved, which kept the existing home that is located in the upper right-hand corner of the plan as house number 462. And that's a little over, it's approximately a one-acre lot. And then there was another frontage lot on Josiah Bartlett Road in the upper left-hand corner, which is also a one-acre lot, and that was assigned street address 456. And that leaves the remainder parcel that we're here for tonight as either 458 or 460. On this plan, I also would just like to point out the existing drainage swale in this location here. There's an existing culvert underneath Welcome Drive, underneath Josiah Bartlett Road, I'm sorry, that takes runoff from the Welcome Drive side of the site, and conveys it to an existing wetland and brook on the south portion of the property here. And this is a proposed color-up of the project. The development's to be serviced by a private road, which is proposed to be called Midmark Lane. The road is to be maintained by the condominium association. We've provided for a 60-foot right-of-way, 22 feet of pavement with two-foot gravel shoulders, except at the cul-de-sac area where we have 26 feet of pavement, as recommended by staff. The right, the road is approximately 675 feet long, going from Josiah Bartlett Road to the end of the cul-de-sac, and we've provided sloped granite curbing for approximately the first 300 feet of the roadway, and then the remaining portion of the roadway is not curved and has roadside swales. The profile of the road generally follows the existing grade, sloping from Josiah Bartlett Road to the rear of the property. The culvert, the road, and the drainage system, everything associated with the, what you see here, will be maintained by the association. The homes are all to be serviced by gas and underground electric running from Josiah Bartlett Road, and each unit will have its own septic system and well. We did have a number of test pits in excess of 20 dug on-site to verify adequate areas for septic systems, and have shown the applicable 4K areas as required. We meet the open space requirements set forth in the zoning ordinance. Our total acreage is 12.65 acres. We've provided 50% of open space, which is basically everything outside of this blue-dashed area going up to the red outline. And we've provided 50% for the condominium development, which does include the roadway. However, I would like to note that there's additional open space associated with the project as, there's open space associated with the limited common areas. So everything you're looking at on the plan here represents about 10% of impervious surface on the whole site, about 1.2 out of the 12.65 acres, so roughly 11.4 acres would be left in open space. Relative to stormwater, the, roughly the eastern third of the property up here slopes toward this existing drainage swale, which goes to the existing brook and wetland over here to the south, and then the remainder of the property sheets to the east towards Sheep Davis Road, and there's a couple existing culverts underneath Sheep Davis Road that then convey the water further south. Our proposed stormwater design captures all the runoff from the roadways and the driveways, directs it in, using a combination of an open and a closed drainage system, and conveys it to a sediment forebay, which then directs the runoff to an infiltration basin that infiltrates, recharges the groundwater, and then daylights the flow in the same location that it's currently going to the existing culverts underneath Sheep Davis Road. I do apologize, as I noticed that there is one error on this color-up, in that this area that showed his tree here is where the infiltration basin is, so the proposed tree line in this area pretty much just falls straight across from what is shown here. The area of trees from the road to the proposed tree line is in excess of 100 feet in this area, and then it expands up to about 240 feet in this area here. The drainage analysis that was submitted and reviewed by the city shows that there's no increase in the peak rate of runoff or volume to any discharge location for any of the required storm events, and volumes from the two-year storm are completely detained within the infiltration basin. We have provided a landscape plan as part of the plan set, which does exceed requirements. It shows nine trees being planted along Josiah Bartlett Road, and 30 trees along the proposed Midmark Lane, and the center island of the cul-de-sac. We also submitted a traffic memorandum as part of the application. This showed the traffic from the development will only add 10 to 11 trips during the AM peak and PM peak hours, or about one new trip every five to six minutes. And this level of traffic falls within ordinary incremental growth, and is less than the typical day-to-day variations in volumes at the New Hampshire Route 106, Route 106 intersections at either end of Josiah Bartlett Road. And the conclusion of that memorandum was the traffic from the development could be safely accommodated on the adjacent roadway network without any improvements. We also did supply three renderings for the proposed homes. We provided three styles as well. One is a cottage, one is a New Englander, and one is a ranch, just to give an idea of the flavor of the development. Again, Mr. Witcher's a custom home builder, so buyers will be given the opportunity to select a unit type and colors from a certain color palette, which we've supplied to ADR and staff. I believe that the only requirement is that no two homes that are the same style can be located next to each other, is what we agreed to with staff. And as Sam mentioned, we worked closely with staff throughout the design of the project, and went through a number of iterations, from private, from public road to private road, open and closed drainage, sidewalks and no sidewalks, and we had kind of landed on, everybody felt that this was an acceptable proposal for the type of development and roadway being proposed. We wanted to try to keep a rural feel to the, to the development project, keep things spaced out, not necessarily compacted as much. That did generate one waiver, as was mentioned in the staff report, from section 20, Table 20-1 of the subdivision regulations, which requires a pavement width of 26 feet. We've provided the 22 with two-foot gravel shoulders, except at the cul-de-sac, we do have 26 feet. And staff does support this waiver per the report. The second waiver request is from section 21.16 for street lightings, and that's to not provide the required streetlight at the intersection of Midmark Lane and Josiah Bartlett Road. We feel that's a reasonable request, given that there's no other street lighting in the area, and we're trying to keep the neighborhood feel that currently exists. And we do appreciate staff's help through the process, and we appreciate your consideration of this application. Can I answer any questions you might have?
Okay. Questions from the board?
Matt?
I'm so, looking at Google Maps, I'm looking at the trees along 106. I'm curious how many of those trees will be removed in the completion of this project?
I'm sorry?
How many trees will be removed in the completion of the project, and will there be...
I don't have a number of trees. I could tell you, looking at this plan, the existing tree line is generally in this location that follows my cursor, to give you an idea of the amount of tree clearing that's being proposed. In most areas, I believe it falls within 40 to 80 feet of trees, but in some areas there is more. The existing amount of trees, if we're just holding a reference line of Sheep Davis Road edge of pavement, the existing tree line from Sheep Davis Road to the existing tree line is approximately 250 to 300 feet now. And in the proposed condition, it ranges at the worst spot to 110 feet, and then most areas about 190 to 240 feet. It varies a little bit, depending on where you are. And there is some flexibility with that, because depending on the house style that's chosen, and the, where the house is located, you know, things could shift a little bit. We've just shown the adequate areas for the wells and septics, but they don't necessarily need to clear out all that area in order to accomplish that. So we'll, we'll try to minimize things as best we can.
It looks like you're preserving most of the trees, or a large percentage of the trees.
Yeah.
We'd like to keep a buffer between the road and, as many trees as possible, and we'll stay. You know, that buffer between 106 and the development is as important to us as everybody.
Yeah, it was one of the concerns of one of the letters we received, but it doesn't appear to me that it's a clear cut, and that's what I would...
Other questions? Counselor Pierce?
Thank you.
Thank you. Tell me about capacity of the aquifer. What, how do you determine that, and what, what do you see?
So, getting some of the concerns from the neighbors, and we did do some research. We went to the, the state website for wells in the area, and we, we researched that area in general. Most of the research came from Welcome Drive, which is the most recent development done on that develop, that area. Most of the wells in that area were drilled from 200 feet to 500 feet, and all of the wells received adequate water for state approval, the most being about 30 gallons a minute, the least being about four, three to four gallons a minute. So, in determination of the wells, it seems that the aquifers are adequate to provide water to another set of dwellings. So, there are no wells that have been reported on the state website as redrills, so we don't have any information other than the state website to, to go to get that. The last well wasn't in that development that was drilled nearby, was 330 feet, 40 feet of casing, and 18 gallons a minute, which is a very good well. That's the, the information we're available to pull off the state websites.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? And staff?
Just following up on the tree question, I'd just like to sort of restate what you just said and lend my support to it, because right here, for the intent, for the purposes of clarity of what you're proposing, I can see why you would clear that to show like grassed areas, or sort of, but what I think I might have heard you say is that you could potentially keep this tree line as much as possible and maybe clear, like, clearings in the woods, sort of, for those bottom three lots. So, instead of having like, clearing as much as possible, maybe it's more like a wooded lot with a little clearing in the lot.
Yeah, our intent is definitely.
Might look very different from, from that.
Our intent would definitely be to keep as many trees as possible in a lot.
Yeah. So, you wouldn't necessarily have a big lawn, it might just be like wooded.
Yeah, we'd rather, we'd rather not build a big lawn.
Yeah.
We would rather only clear trees enough to be safe around the house. In other words, trees that were close to fall in the house, that, that's really our limit of cut. We would try to, even in the, the three lots that you see there that have the most clearing, you know, if they can be pulled closer or less disturbance to those trees, that's very desirable for us. And, and it does slope downhill off that back, so it, it does go downhill fairly quickly. So, we're, we're more enticed to stay closer to the road on those lots than go over the hillside, for sure.
Do you have a fence, or are you gonna put a fence up along Sheep Davis? I'm only asking in terms of like trespassing or noise?
No, I, I don't think there's one necessary. I mean, I prefer not to put a fence through the woods that doesn't get maintained and kind of looks bad after time. I mean, I think it's a pretty, it's a pretty steep slope from, from that upper field down to the road. It's not very, it's not like it's going to be used much as a area for people to be in. I mean, I think it's pretty natural down there, and I think it'd be best to leave natural.
Well, a fence wouldn't work well anyway, if there's that much slope for sound.
Yeah, it really wouldn't help, and I think it'd be more detriment to whatever wildlife's down there and what have you.
Okay, any other questions? Any member of the audience wish to address this application? No?
What are they here for, then?
Yeah, what are they here for, then? Okay, we'll close the public hearing, we'll have you guys step back, that'll be great, thank you. Comments, questions, concerns from staff, from the board? Any other comments regarding the, the application? If not, we can go right into our waivers, take a peek here. And just for the record, we did receive several letters that are in your packet. Again, I think they've addressed most of the concerns, our concerns that aren't going to be addressed because people just didn't want it, but on our waiver section here, we have, we close the public hearing, Lisa?
You did, Rich. Good job.
He's good tonight, isn't he?
Yes.
It's in person, if it's not, if it's not on Zoom, I'm.
And without agenda notes.
Okay, so 2.1, under the waiver section, we've got an application, the applicant's requested a waiver from Section 20, Table 20-1 for standards of residential common and private driveways to construct a road with pavement 22 feet where 26 is required. Staff does support that waiver. And under 2.2, the applicant requesting an additional waiver for Section 21.16 for streetlights, and I believe staff is in support of that waiver. Would someone like to make a motion to grant those two waivers as outlined in your packet?
Still moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. And item three is technical review comment. And have all those been appropriately addressed, Sam? May I ask you?
We still, the condominium declarations and bylaws, we haven't received those, but that can be a condition of.
So, condition, so, condition of approval be to follow up with staff regarding the condominium bylaws?
All those, Section 3 is all wrapped up in the precedent conditions.
So, in item four on our agenda, 4.1 is to grant the waiver. But, I read the wrong one, Sam? You let me go through all that and read that wrong one?
Section 2 is the summary of the waiver.
Section 2 is the summary of the waiver, I got you. So, we already did the waivers, we'll go to 4.2, right? 4.2, to grant ADR approval?
You voted on the waivers already.
We did vote on the waivers already, yeah.
We're, we're having a who's on first moment. So, you did grant the waivers.
Who's on first, so now I got, who's on second, which is 4.2. Grant the ADR approval for the building architecture styles and materials, landscape and the site layout. Someone like to make a motion to grant ADR approval as outlined? Some of.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. 4.3 is to grant the minor, oh, I'm sorry, Suzanne.
What about, there's a mention here of a waiver for the streetlight?
Yep, we did that.
What did you say?
We said yes, you voted on it.
He wrapped them in, he wrapped them into 106.
Okay, that's, I missed that part.
That's what I was saying.
That's what you were saying too? Oh, okay.
4.3 is a typo, that should be major subdivision.
So, grant major subdivision approval for the three lot.
Makes more sense.
For the three lot? Minor subdivision, of course.
Nine.
It says three.
I know, I, I fixed it, but it didn't transfer.
All right, well.
Didn't save.
Duly noted that I'm not losing it, it's.
So, they're only gonna get three of them?
Yeah. Okay, so, just for the record, it is, 4.3 is a granting a major site plan approval for a nine-lot subdivision, major site subdivision at 462 Josiah Bartlett Road, subject to the following conditions, and again, those are outlined in conditions 1 through 10. Would someone like to make a motion to grant that major site plan approval as outlined?
Someone?
Second.
Motion's made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, so you're all set, thank you very much. And that'll move us right along to item 7E on our agenda. Dakota Partners, on behalf of P&amp;M Realty of Concord LLC, request a major subdivision approval to create a land condominium unit on property off of Langdon Avenue in the Opportunity Corner. And if anybody came in late, if, I outlined this in before, we have two items on our agenda, 7E and 7F. 7E creates condominium, 7F is probably what people are here to ask questions about regarding the property itself and the development of the property. But if you'd like to ask a question on the condominium, feel free, but we'll open that up for the public hearing and welcome the Dakota Partners folks up to the table.
Could you just explain that condominiums, they don't necessarily mean actual buildings that people are going to live in?
It's land condominium.
Land condominiums, yeah, again, again, for the record, we're talking land condominiums, not the condominiums people are used to regarding a condo or an apartment or whatnot. This is splitting up the land and recognizing that that's a condominium, not, not a condominium to live in, but the actual land condominium. Okay, so, welcome to the table, if you guys could state your names for the record?
I'm Chris Netto with Novus Group.
Peter Bloomfield with P&amp;M Realty.
And Mark Palat with Dakota Partners.
Great, welcome to the table, if you guys could sign in, and we'll get a quick staff update, or a robust staff update, I will say.
This one won't be robust, the next one will be.
The next one will be robust.
This is a relatively simple, we're still awaiting comments from the city assessor, but they, I think they addressed most of our initial comments. Yeah, simple land unit.
Simple land unit condominium.
Yep, there was questions I had about the conservation easement, which hopefully they'll address tonight, or, I mean, that's something that can be addressed as part of the appropriate process, but I'll let them take it away.
Okeydoke.
All right, thank you. Again, Chris Netto with Novus Group. Wondering how you'd like to do this, we can, we can present the entire thing, or we can just look at the condominium?
Just look at the condo, the land condo, and then we'll vote on that, and then we'll move to the next part.
Got it. So, I'm gonna call up the rendering we have for the property. Again, we were here back in April for comprehensive development plan, so we're proposing basically a five-phase project consisting of 192 residential units and two office buildings, divided into, it was basically four land units in the condominium. The first land unit is the existing Evo Gym, let's read along, I got a pointer here, actually. I'm sorry, Gary, if I, if I point you in the head, but, so the Evo Gym and parking lot is here, this is Langdon Ave. Let me just widen out the view here if I can. South Main Street on the upper side, the railroad's down on the lower part of the drawing. So, again, land unit one is the existing Evo Gym, land unit two will be the residential portion of, of the project, which is down in the south end, along with the conservation easement. Land unit three will be the two office buildings, and then land unit four will be the sort of overflow parking for the office complex. And then, the residential buildings will be further subdivided down into individual subunits, A through E, so each building will be its own condominium. We have two 12 units, two 36 units, two 48 units, and a clubhouse, so that's A, B, C, D, E, I said E, right? So, just sort of a, a counterclockwise motion for those subunits in the condominium. And that's really it, as far as the condominium is concerned.
Okay, that's fine. Okay, questions from the board? This is a public hearing, so any member of the audience have any questions regarding this application?
I have more of a question on procedural issues.
Certainly.
Since 7E and 7F are co-located items, I think a lot of folks may want to address both the subdivision of the property as well as the planning, the use, the planned use in the same testimony.
Yep.
So, might you take one public testimony for both 7E and 7F?
We can do that.
And go on separately on, as you, as you address them?
I think we can do that.
I'm not clear what we're saying. Does that mean we're not gonna make a motion?
Don't make a motion on this until we hear 7F.
Okay, that's fine, that's your choice.
Folks can testify once and address issues on both.
Yep, we're fine with that. Okay, so we'll recognize from procedural perspective, we won't, we'll, we'll table this until after 7F is heard, and then we'll come back to 7E and, and address it. Okay?
I don't know if you want to actually table.
No, I don't want to table it. I just want to take them out of order.
Yeah, that's fine.
We'll move, we'll move right along, and again, go right to 7, to 7F then, Chris, if you want to.
Can I give a staff update on that before they go in?
So, if you want to get, if you want to get ready, we'll move to 7F, and we'll get a staff update.
Yep.
Sure, so I just want to highlight a few things, I'm sure they'll give a presentation, but to point out in our staff report, so, we, there was a traffic study done, and that led to the recommendations for the offsite improvements, so that's what's been addressed through our peer review by VHB, and the traffic study that was completed. They are requesting a credit, and that is not in the report, that came in this week, a credit to the transportation facilities impact fees, and they want to, using the, which is allowed under our ordinance, they'll pay for the offsite improvements and then get the credit to not, then almost double pay within the transportation impact fees. So, that is something that planning board can approve the credit, and then Heather, as the clerk of the board, has the authority to approve the amount of the credit once we finalize the cost estimate that will come forward with the city engineer. So, I'll, once we go through and do the voting, I'm gonna add that as a recommendation at the end.
Okay.
For, staff is in support of that credit, because the improvements on South Main Street are in the CIP, so that is something that the city had planned to do in the future.
So, just for clarification-wise, we're, we're talking about a credit for improvements that'll be made to South Main Street because of this development?
Exactly, yep, and it would potentially have happened in the future if this project wasn't happening.
Can I, can I clarify?
Go ahead.
So, the, the reason that we can use the traffic impact fees is because this section of South Main Street is, is currently in the CIP for improvements. So, if it wasn't already in the CIP, we wouldn't be able to do that, but that's why we can, because it's actually part of a city-assigned project, it's in the works in the CIP.
It's on the list.
It's on the list of stuff the city wants to do, basically, yes.
Okay.
Some other points of, this was discussed at ADR, and something that staff would like them to look at is additional entrances to the courtyard side of the buildings, providing a more main entrance for the commercial buildings on that street between the residential and the commercial buildings, make it more pedestrian scale. That, there's a letter forwarded to you all, I think it was today or maybe yesterday.
This afternoon.
Was it this afternoon?
Yes.
That's when I got it. So, reg, from the property owner requesting to, that not be a condition of approval for architectural design review approval, so that's something that, if you, once listening to the applicant, if you want to change that, that will be a change to the recommendations from staff, and then also for bike lanes to be striped on the north side of Langdon. There was a letter in the packet from Concord Coach, Heather spoke with their attorney today for clarification, they're okay if it's just striping. If it is just striping, they requested that it be continued to the dead-end portion of Langdon, right now it's only being shown to the intersection for this development.
Is that on the north side of the project?
Yep.
So, on the opposite side of the street?
On the side where Concord Coach is, yep.
Thought it was on the other side for some reason, okay.
We want them on both.
We want them on both.
Oh, we want them on both, okay.
Yeah, the letter from Concord Coach said they were opposed to the bike lanes, but they misunderstood what we were requesting.
Weren't putting a carabin or anything like that.
Right, they thought it was more like trees and benches and lights.
Okay, yep, go ahead, sorry.
So, those are the main things in the recommendations, there's conditional use permit to not construct all of the parking for the residential development at this time, which staff is in support of, and a waiver for stormwater due to the environmental conditions on the site. We conditioned that on receiving more information from DES, that DES is in agreement with the reasoning that they had given for that.
DES is in agreement?
We don't know.
We don't know, okay.
But, we, we had requested additional information, so that would be a conditional approval for that waiver, for stormwater treatment.
Okay. That's it?
For now.
Well played.
Those are the highlights.
We won't dim the lights for you, Chris, but if you want to play the video, that would be great.
I will, and I'll try to narrate as we go through here. So, we're starting out here, right at the corner of where the Evo Gym is and where we enter the site into the driveway. So, to our back is South Main Street, looking straight, up straight ahead would be the railroad side of the property, so we're starting out here. We see the two office buildings on the left-hand side as we're approaching down the site driveway. Again, Evo Gym is behind us, and we're coming up to the four-way intersection of the three condo units. This is sort of the streetscape that we're talking about, between the residential on the right, there are two 12-unit buildings on the right, and the office buildings on the left. So, what we're trying to do here is achieve a streetscape where we have sidewalks on both sides of the road, as well as parallel parking, and you'll, you'll get a better look at that as we go through. So, continuing down this streetscape, you'll see the entrances to the 12-unit buildings are on the right, and we do have entrances to the office buildings on the roadway, although they are not the primary entrances, and we'll talk about that later. So, just backing out, back to the intersection, we're gonna go down, start down the loop road for the residential, again, 12-unit building on the left, a 36-unit building here, we have stair tower, so an egress door is that, that door right there. This is the primary entrance to the 36 unit. You can see in the background, we have a courtyard, and you'll see that better as we do sort of a flyover the entire site. This is a 48-unit building, again, the stair tower and egress door is there on the left, we just zoomed by it, and the primary door for the facility is, for the, for the building is, is here. So, now we're down, getting down to the far south end of the development, and we turn a corner here on the loop road. The building on the left is the clubhouse. We do have some parking spaces down at this end of the development, because there is a, a site plan regulation that requires, if we're so many feet away from an apartment unit, you have to have additional parking spaces for people to drive from their units down to the clubhouse. I think it's 500 feet. See a playground there in the background as well. Now, we're gonna turn the corner and head back north. To our right is the railroad. Again, sort of a mirror image of the other side, this is a 48-unit building with the primary doorway right here, and the stair tower and egress doorway is the second door here. You'll notice that we have parking lining around the, the, around all the buildings rather than on the outskirts of the property. This is a 36 unit, again, mirrored from the other side, primary entrance door is here, egress door here, and now we're approaching the 12 unit in the background there. The office buildings are coming up here to our left. So, I don't know if you can see that or not, but there is, there is a driveway behind, behind here that's gonna be gated, so that folks in the residential development will not. not be able to drive through the office park, but it will be for emergency vehicles to be able to make a loop if the roadway gets blocked. So coming through the sort of streetscape, you can see how close the building is to the street line. Not sure whether we're going to put the fence in or not, I think there were some comments about that. There will be, there will be temporary fencing there until the office buildings are built just to sort of keep the residents within the residential part of the development. As you know, the, the site is sort of industrial in nature, so we want to kind of keep the residential people on the residential property. Again, primary door to the, to the twelve unit here, same thing with the mirrored twelve unit down here. Access door for the office building, number sixteen here, and you can just see the, the other, this is a four-story office building, the other's a two-story. Now we're gonna, we're gonna keep going. We do have a connection from the resident, residential walkway between, to the office buildings and between the office buildings, just to sort of provide walkable areas for people to get to and from. Again, two-story building on the right, twelve-unit residential building on the left. Straight ahead, we're back to the four-way intersection. This is the overflow parking lot for the office building, this is land unit number four. So part of, or again, parking for land unit number three. And then we're going to head back out the primary driveway, you can see the Evo Gym here on the left, two-story office building on the right, over in front of us now. Back out to the driveway intersection, now we're going to head down Langdon Ave and into the front parking for the two office buildings. And this is the only driveway for the office buildings off of Langdon Ave. Again, a good connection to walk, sidewalks along Langdon Avenue, parking on both the east and west sides of the office building. This is the gate I told you about, whoops, let me stop here. Hang on a second. Yeah, and the background there is the gate that I talked about, the emergency, just for emergency vehicles to get through if they have to. The pedestrian corridor between the two office buildings leading into the residential. And then again, two-story building and parking on the west side. So now we're going to go airborne, just so everybody can see sort of an aerial view of the entire development. Again, note the, the large expanse of courtyard in the middle for folks, the green area with walkways in between the buildings. That just circles around back. Everything with a good primary connection to the clubhouse, playground, and right through to the office buildings way on the north side. And stop me if you see, if, if you have questions for anything you see that just doesn't make sense, but it should all be pretty self-explanatory. And I think we provided this video to the city, so if anybody wants to watch it on their own, I think there's a, there should be a link to it. I'll go back here to the, if I can find it. Go back to the site plan. So again, we're proposing one hundred and ninety-two residential units with, with the six buildings plus a clubhouse, two office buildings, a four-story and a two-story with overflow parking on the other lot. We are asking for a conditional use permit for the parking for the residential use. We feel, we feel, Dakota Partners feels that one and a half spaces per unit is adequate, the city requires two. So we are showing roughly three hundred parking spaces for, for, to meet the one and a half per unit. And then down on the far south, south end of the project, we show where we could build the additional hundred, let's see, hundred and five spaces that would meet the letter of the law for the zoning ordinance. So that's what we're asking the conditional use permit for. You can see that we're pretty well buffered from any of the neighbors. The railroad is, is running here along the east side. You have Steenbeck and Concord Coach on the north side. This twelve, thirteen-acre conservation easement that won't be touched on the east side and the south side, that's the South End Marsh.
Are there trees in that conservation area now, Chris?
There are, yeah, and so the dark green is basically a no, no-cut zone. We can't touch any of the trees. That's, there's a seventy-five-foot setback to the actual wetland line of the South End Marsh. Sorry, it's not a wetland line, it's a shoreline zone. So basically take the edge of the shoreline zone, we go out seventy-five feet and we can't touch any of the, of the trees or any of the vegetation. As far as stormwater is concerned, the, the, the commercial and the residential will be separated. The commercial, stormwater will be controlled in a subsurface under the parking lot and then discharged into, there's a twenty-foot or thirty-foot easement, storm drain easement with a storm pipe, a city storm drain that runs right through the site here, and we're tying into that. The stormwater for the overflow parking lot along with Evo will go into a detention area that's just on this side, and I should be using the pointer, sorry, just to the south of the parking lot. And then all the storm drainage for the residential will, will be stored both under the parking lot and then into a, a large pond at the south, very south end of, of the site. I wanted to, we just wanted to go over a few of the, of the conditions that were, and comments that were outlined in staff's report. And Peter and Mark are here to help me describe some of those. The first would be the waiver for the storm drainage. The city requires that we, that we mitigate up to a ten-year storm for the amount of flow that leaves the site. And the only way you can do that is, is with infiltration. There's no other way to mitigate the flow, that's the quantity of water that actually leaves the site. And the reason we, we are unable to do infiltration here is because DES does not allow us to infiltrate into soils that are contaminated or, or above the groundwater quality standards for the state. So what we're doing is we're, we're holding, throttling the water back and then letting it go out primarily to the South End Marsh, some of it to the, the city storm drain as, as I mentioned for the office park. So, so because we can't do the infiltration, we're asking for a waiver of Section 2207 of the site plan regulations that require us to maintain, maintain a, a ten-year volume of stormwater. So that's the first. Second was, we'll talk a little bit about the, the left turn lane on Langdon. I have a better plan of that, let me, let me. So Steve Pernoz is here, he's our traffic engineer, and Steve did a traffic study for the, for the site. And bear with me while I just pull up the left turn lane drawing here. And again, this is for South Main Street, here we go. So, and Steve's report, we did find that after the, in the second phase of the residential project, which the, I forget, I'm sorry, I forgot to mention the phases. First phase would be to build a twelve unit and a thirty-six unit building. The second phase would be to add in the forty-eight unit. The likely phase one and phase two will be done at the same time, but what Steve's report said was that a left-hand turn warrant was, was generated for when we got to phase two. So we could build a twelve unit and a thirty-six unit without any improvements on South Main Street, but once we add in the forty-eight unit, it trips the warrant for a left turn lane on South Main. And this is a picture of what that might look like. Again, this is, this is, this is headed north towards McDonald's and, and the intersection, this is heading south towards exit twelve. So what we're showing here is, is two eleven-foot lanes, two five-foot bike lanes on either side, and the left turn lane in the middle. And this is Maitland Ave right here. Yeah, Red Cross over here, Bacon Rug here. Challenge we're having is that the right-of-way is not wide enough to, to provide that, unfortunately, without some significant removal of utility poles along South Main Street. So we had come up with a suggestion that we utilize the, the shoulder, rather than doing a designated left turn lane, that we utilize the shoulders as sort of a bypass lane for a car. So somebody pulls up to turn left onto, onto Langdon Ave, there is enough room for a car to get by, based on the existing width of the pavement out there now. But staff has recommended that we pursue this, this left turn lane. And Mark, I don't know if you want to add anything about challenges with, with cost or?
Yeah, we, we have met with the, the staff to go through costs because right now the project is, is over budget, way over budget, and this is one of the areas that's hit us hard. So I met with the staff to go through the issues and kind of lay out, you know, what my issues are. So we've been working with them, they've been extremely cooperative in trying to find a, I guess, a solution that can work for both parties. They didn't recognize that on the west side of South Main Street, there is no more right-of-way area. Sorry, we were eliminated, you know, we're tight right there. And that we're required to go and seek easements on the property owners to get that wider. And then on the east side, which is towards Concord Coach and us, that has plenty of right-of-way, but the problem is the utility poles within that area. And walking and talking with the utility company to relocate those is a tremendous cost of well over a hundred and fifty thousand because of the, the lines that are on there, you know, would all have to be replaced and reworked because of bringing them in further. So it's, it's been a juggling act to figure out how we can make this thing work. But working with the staff right now, we're, we're making some headway on that, to say the least, but that's really.
One of the other comments from staff was related to the phasing. Under the site plan ordinance, we're required, we're, we're only allowed six years to fulfill build-out. As I mentioned before, we, we have five phases here. Phase one would be the twelve unit. The, I don't know why I'm getting a red thing popping up here, or yellow, sorry. So the twelve unit, thirty-six unit would be phase one, phase two would be the forty-eight unit and the clubhouse. So really, we're, we'd be building the, the western half of the development in the first two phases, likely happen at the same time, based on funding. And then phase three would be this forty-eight unit, phase four would be the thirty-six and the twelve, and then phase five would be the office buildings. And we laid out a schedule, it's required by the, the ordinance of the five phases, each lasting, or phase one and two would be two, the first two years, three and four would be the second two years, and then the office buildings would be the final two years. But I guess we're, we're curious as to what happens if, if Peter gets tenants for the office buildings and wants to build the office buildings immediately. We don't want to be held to not be, or we don't want to be held to having to build phase one and two before phase five can get built. So we're asking for some flexibility on the phasing and wondering how, you know, whether we come back to the board to ask for flexibility in the phasing or, or if there, if, it, it can be administratively approved and?
So the only trigger, the only trigger on the phasing is the left turn lane, right? There's no other trigger, you don't have to do any other major improvements to the site?
That's right.
That is correct.
Yeah.
And there's a limit on the overall six years, so I don't, there's no issues in that respect.
And, and yeah, and it's not something that, I mean, we've had projects go longer than six years.
Yes.
And, and we've pushed them out, we'll make you rip them all down and start over again, no. And we've pushed them out, so.
Yeah.
I don't know if it can be handled administratively or have to come back to the board, we need to get some clarification.
Okay.
I can agree with you right now, no, we would not handle it administratively. Especially if the office buildings were to come in before, you're, you're going to, before your two years, and that, that mainly has to do with the warrants for, or the warrants for the, for the traffic. So in other words, right now I think we have it written that prior to completion of, I'm not sure if it's phase one or phase two.
Phase two.
It's phase two, that the traffic improvements have to be put in.
Right.
So, and I'm not sure, maybe you know the answer to this, if, if you're only, if you only have whatever, you know, a third of the units or two-thirds of the units, and then the office building bam goes in, now you've triggered, but you haven't gotten to the end of phase two. So we would want to work all of that into the timing and, and it would basic, and if it's pretty simple, like you're going to do it, say it's phase four and, or phase three, you've already built the traffic improvement, that's a simple amendment to your phasing plan. We do that all the time with, with these types of projects. So it's, you, you come back to the board, you ask for an amendment to your phasing plan, no big deal.
Okay.
Okay.
Makes sense.
Yeah, that's, makes sense.
One of, and to, to point out a couple of the ADR comments, first, and Peter's going to speak to this, with, with regard to the primary entrances for the office buildings on the south side of the building facing the residential to create the streetscape. As you, as you recall from the video, the primary entrances to the office buildings are off the parking. There are entrances for the commercial building on the south side, but they're doors, so they're connections, but, but they're not the primary entrance because people will be driving here to work in the office building. Peter, I don't know if you want to expand on that?
Pretty much covered it, that the primary entrance to the, to the commercial buildings, we feel should be coming down the main road and then their, then the primary entrances are, are, are facing the parking lot, which is, which would normally be expected. There's not a lot of room on the south part of that with the widening of that, of that road there. It just makes a lot more sense for us to have the, the main face of the building, the main entrance of the building to be facing Langdon Ave.
And just to touch upon this as well, just, so when you look at the plan, you say, well, it looks like you have plenty of room behind those smaller buildings. Those twelve-unit buildings are placed there that within, they're outside of the five-hundred-year flood plain, I need to keep them outside of that, so they're just on the edge of that. So that kind of fixes the south end of the, the property for those two buildings. Then on the other side of the office buildings, as Chris mentioned earlier, there's a thirty-foot wide easement with a stormwater line running down through it, which, you know, obviously you're not going to want to put a building over that, and they wouldn't allow us, even if we tried. So we're kind of sandwiched within that area to try to make it all work. So what Peter has done is created a small secondary entrance to the, to the road that's between the twelve-unit buildings and the, the office buildings to make that connection. So if people did park there, they could go through that entrance, or if they live there, they can go through that entrance to get into the office.
So I know there was some discussion about the back of the building facing the residential, the residential buildings. I know in looking at it, again, we, we see these plans all the time, or we see different projects come through all the time, you know, the back of the building's got the loading dock on it, it's got the dumpsters on it, it's got the, you know, the, the trucks coming and going and whatnot. So, you know, depending on who you get for a tenant, everything's going to be on the front of the building, so, you know, the, the UPS guy comes in, the FedEx guy comes in, the, you know, the services people come in, they're all going to come in through the front and not park and not access the building from these backs, is that right?
That's the intent, yes.
Yeah. Yeah, and for trash, yeah, I know that from the residential standpoint, we have separate trash receptacles, a designated location, at two locations. So they're kind of tucked further away, they're not up against the building, so there, people have to go to it, and I believe the office has done the same thing, they've tucked it off to the side.
The dumpsters would be located on the two, the east and west sides of the buildings.
Okay.
And while we're talking about doors, there was also a comment about providing more doors, the residential units on the, on the courtyard side of, of, of the buildings, and there is only one door on each building towards the court side, the courtyard side. There's a purpose for that, it's honestly, it's, it's, it's saving room in, in the building in order to provide doors, additional doors for these buildings on the courtyard side, you'd have to basically eat up space in the building to create a, a corridor that, and a doorway that would reflect all the way up the full three floors and?
Yeah, there's, there's two. Yeah, there's, there's two big issues. One is, the major issue is security. We found in many of our locations, once you get too many openings, people end up propping them. They become a, a problem that, from a maintenance issue as well as from people sneaking in. So, you lose control of the, the buildings and become more of a safety issue for the people living there. So, we try to minimize the amount of doors. Secondly, as staff knows, I've gone through a redesign of these buildings because I was extremely over budget. So, I ended up going back and making them tighter where I could. I dropped out twenty thousand square feet out of all the, you know, total, to save. To add another door, door there, like Chris said, on the ground floor, that would require a six-foot wide corridor leading to that door so you can get to it, that translates up through the structure on the upper floors. You know, they got to have the room. I just can't make those rooms smaller by that much. It's just, we don't have that luxury of that much extra space. And it just, you know, when we went through the exercise of redesigning it, you know, again, it just reduced twenty thousand square feet at a hundred and fifty dollars square foot, you know, it's a lot of money, which, you know, I saved.
What, what about egress for fire safety?
It's all met, all met. Travel distance, egress, those things will never be, you know, let go. We always have that maintained. So, the, the access to the back green space comes through the main lobby. So, everybody gathers at the main lobby and get passed through. So, you've got that connection between the front and the back, and it is a point where everybody can go through.
And one of the other comments that, in Peter's letter, was related to coming back to the ADR, and he fully expects to, if, if they have to change the buildings in any way for, for any different tenants that might come in and want a single building or something a little bit different than shown, absolutely would need to come back to ADR. But he's hoping that, the condition would be if, if the buildings are to stay as exactly as shown and, and approved tonight, then, that we don't actually have to go back to ADR, so I'm not sure if?
Yes, that was exactly right.
Yeah. So, that's, did I miss anything, Mark? Was there anything else that we were just kind of questioning on comments or?
No, I think a lot of these other items that the staff has laid out are things that we can work through with the staff. It's, I think they're pretty generic in some cases.
Another question. Just to get back to your discussion on parking, just so I'm clear, are we voting on the, I know, you, you had mentioned that you wanted to reduce it or have a waiver on one and a half spaces.
That's right.
Versus two. Does that, if we grant you the approval on the one and a half spaces, does that preclude then the hundred and two spaces on the south end of the site? I mean, a hundred and two spaces is a large impervious surface.
Correct.
That must impact at some point the retention pond that sits at the very south end of the project. So, are we, are you asking us to waive the two permanently, or is, are you deferring that parking lot?
Yeah, we're?
To another point, another point in the project?
Good, good question. Under the conditional use, so we're asking for a conditional use permit under the zoning ordinance that allows us to build less parking than is required under the ordinance, as long as we show we can build what's required?
What determines that in your mind?
Well, we're basically?
When do you decide that maybe we don't have enough parking?
Right.
And then what happens?
I think that becomes more of an operations on, on my end. And what we've found in our, in our facilities from here to Virginia, that usually about one point two to one point five is the, the proper ratio for our developments. When you start getting up to two spaces, two unit, it's just, it's a, like you said, it's a lot of asphalt, it's a lot of impervious.
And I'm, I'm mixed about whether I like that or don't like that. But I'm, I guess in my mind, I can cite a couple of projects around town that have been around town for a while.
Yeah.
That parking has become a problem. You drive through there and there are cars everywhere. And then they, and then they double park, and then you can't get around, and that creates an emergency issue.
Yeah.
If they had to.
And I think the fallback to that is that code would, you know, people would complain, people that lived in the, in the development, you know, people in the office park, if they started seeing a problem, they'd call the city and complain to code, and then code would, I'm assuming there's a provision for code to step in.
Do we have a, do we have a fallback on that?
So, that, that's the conditional use permit. So, that's why they need to show us that it can be built. So, if, if we receive complaints or if there's note that it's impacting emergency access, then the city will require that they build those parking spaces that they didn't build.
Correct.
But at this point, we're voting that they don't have to?
Correct.
Okay.
Before we do that, are you guys good from a presentation perspective?
We are. Yeah, unless you guys had anything else?
Yeah, I think we're good unless there's any reason why Concord Coach or them want to speak.
No, we'll let them. I just wanted, before we start asking questions roundhouse, I want to make sure you have told us everything about it.
Sure.
Jeff, I have you first.
Yeah, I'm going to just do a couple of quick ones and then I'll defer. On that whole idea of David's parking question is, you're indicating that that parking lot up kind of next to Evo is the overflow for the office?
Yes, yes.
Are you going to be able to control that such that if the residential units start overflowing into that parking, that it triggers the hundred and five? Or are you going to wait till the office building complains that they no longer have a parking? You know what I mean? How are you restricting that to only the office parking, such that the residential don't start, you know? We all know a lot of times business parking lots get plowed before residenials. So, suddenly, those people start parking there all the time, and then what you find is you're higher than the one point five ratio, and that the office maybe doesn't need it, but that's officially supposed to be for them. How are you going to control that or address it?
Right, again, I think it's an operational between, between Peter or whoever the tenant is of the office building.
If the office building people are finding that they don't have places to park, first people we're going to complain to is?
Yeah, and we'll have our management on site. So, it's, like I said, we usually find it between one point two and one point five. So, we're very comfortable that's not going to be an issue. And if it is, we have the staffing that will address it. And at that point in time, we'll post signage that you'll be towed at the owner's expense.
Do you have a mix as far as one bedroom, two bedroom? Do you, just a rough idea of what you're going to have?
It's usually a fifty-fifty. I just don't know off the top of my head if it was fifty-fifty or sixty-forty at the end of the day.
Ones and twos?
Ones and twos.
Okay. Matt, or I'm sorry, Jeff?
Well, I just, I noticed on your, kind of your overflow plan, you have all the parking notes, but you have nothing about how many ADA spaces are required between the residential and commercial.
Yep, I do on the site plan.
Did I miss that? I apologize.
Yeah, no, no problem. I can see if I can pull that.
And then on that same kind of issue, the, the two parallel parking spots that are ADA in the central roadway, those are kind of difficult because they don't really have the five-foot hatchery. So, I would suggest you look at Main Street and how those parallel parking were done as ADA spaces where maybe the sidewalk has to kind of bump a little bit to provide that additional adjacent to those.
That's on Main Street, you said?
Yes.
Thank you.
And then?
So, Jeff, just to answer your first question.
Yeah, sorry about that.
Parking summary, which required parking spaces here. Sorry. I don't know that it's, it may not be included in, I, it may not be included in the table. Morgan, you can help me with that, but I'm, I'm almost positive we have more than is required under the?
And you consider them separate of the two you should, since your parking is separated?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, no question. You notice there's no, there's no ADA spaces in this overflow parking because it just doesn't make sense. So, anything associated with the office is out in front of the office. We did put two out in front of the two twelve units because we have to be the closest parking spaces to the front doors. And then we have, we have spaces for each one of the units plus the clubhouse.
Okay.
Correct.
That's fine for now. I'll, we have others after.
Matt?
So, my question is about the height of your tallest building. It looks like it's about sixty-two feet. Is that correct?
The res, the office building?
Building sixteen?
Yeah.
Or is one of the office buildings taller than sixty-two feet? That's what it shows on the elevation, so I'll just go with sixty-two feet.
Okay.
Yeah.
For now, around the elevations. What is the change in elevation from South Main Street to this site? Do you have any idea? It does go downhill slightly.
About twenty-five, twenty feet, I think.
Yeah, it's just, it's a pretty substantial elevation drop.
So?
Because it depends, because it also, South Main Street also dips and comes back up. So, depending on where you're measuring it from on South Main Street.
True, right, so if you're across by S and W is in the dip, right, you go up either side.
I can get you an exact answer in, in a few minutes, but it might take some counting.
Sure, I'm just kind of wondering, looking from South Main Street, so, you know, how much of the, the height of the buildings will be visible?
Morgan can count those contours for us.
Counting numbers over there.
Yeah, it's kind of, you know, you got the rock climbing, you know, building in there first, so it's closer, so that cuts down, and it's a fairly tall building, even though it's, I think.
And then you have, so your buildings, your larger residential units are taller and they're in the back, right? So, closer to the railroad?
They're all the same height, in a sense, they're all three stories.
Okay.
So, you know, they're just either three stories with twelve units or three stories with forty-eight, you know, and then you get the thirty-six.
Thank you.
Yeah, the, again, the great thing about the residential is that we're really, we've got a huge buffer here with the, the conservation, the dark green between, between the residential and anything on South Main Street. And it's heavily, heavily vegetated.
I mean, the, the change in elevation from South Main Street to the site does mitigate some of that visibility of the buildings. I mean, not completely, of course, but it, it definitely helps a little bit.
Yeah, absolutely. And also, as Chris mentioned, the, the conservation land, we will have a fence separating the, you know, so the kids and whatever don't go into that area. You know, so we want to be sure it's segregated out, so you can't get to it.
Thank you.
How about mechanicals for the apartment buildings? I saw some depressions in the roof lines when you did the flyover. Is that where the mechanicals are going to be?
That's where, yeah, most of the mechanicals will be on there.
So, not visible?
Yeah, they'll be more visible, they're on top, easy to maintain, and they won't be visible at the end.
So, on building sixteen, the front commercial building, mechanicals behind that, I think, front wall that's there, will those be visible from the residential side?
No, no.
Snow storage?
We have multiple locations throughout. Chris can kind of show those.
Just trying to get past the, I don't know why I can't bounce between documents here, but, sorry.
First time coming here?
I'd say.
He wishes. He wishes it was his first time coming here.
Tough, tough.
Still licking his wounds.
Just blaming on COVID.
So, the plan is?
I mean, it looks like you've got plenty of space.
Yeah, certainly down at the south end, we've actually moved the pond further south so we can allow for quite a bit of snow storage on the south. The goal is not to plow to the interior and leave that open for people so we don't, we don't inundate them with snowbanks. It's really pushed to the outside.
What is it, Morgan?
Yeah.
Do you have any answer?
Yeah, so ADA is seven parking spots for three hundred parking spots, so seven, and we show sixteen for the residential. And for the commercial, we have two hundred and forty-eight spots shown. I mean, seven is required, and we also show seven ADA spots.
And just for the record, Morgan is, Morgan?
From Nova's group.
Morgan Dunson.
Dunson, thank you.
And the elevation change from the road to the finished floor elevation?
Finished floor on the, on the commercial building?
The commercial is nine feet.
Nine feet down?
Yes.
Okay.
That's it.
That's less than?
From two forty-seven to two thirty-eight.
That's what I wanted to know.
From the entrance?
Yeah, right.
From the entrance. So, it's twenty feet as you come down on the slopes on either side. Okay, thank you. Sorry, so, snow, we're good. Lighting? And you didn't tell me about it, but I just, all regular?
Cut-off fixtures, yes.
Neighborhood friendly. How about lighting up on Langdon Avenue from the commercial building towards South Main?
On Langdon Ave. towards South Main. There's nothing, nothing proposed on Langdon Ave.
Okay.
We will do some adjustments to the lighting within our center section. Part of the review with the architectural review, they want us to look at moving some of them so that the trees don't block lights and within that area, but?
And those lights are more pedestrian-friendly, you know, architecturally nice-looking fixtures as opposed to the outer parking lot are more of the, of the traditional light poles that you'd see in a parking lot.
Okay. Pedestrian traffic out of the building, you know, out of the residential space, walking up Langdon Avenue to South Main, and they come to South Main Street, there's a parking lot on the left-hand side that's empty now. There's no sidewalk on that side, I don't think?
There is no sidewalk. So, what we're doing is we're coming up with a sidewalk up Langdon Ave. to a crosswalk that will?
To a crosswalk to go across to the other side of the street, and then the sidewalk's there?
Yep.
Okay. Suzanne?
Yeah, I have a couple of comments, and I guess I'd like to start with the plant list. It's very difficult and cumbersome looking at it because it's not alphabetical. And I think normally, plant lists are alphabetical, and if you're, especially if you're using symbols, because you really can't find things easily. And it's kind of cluttered, there's just too much information on it to make it even legible, really.
Okay.
And there's also some inconsistencies with the labeling. There's a evergreen tree that's listed as a large deciduous tree.
Okay.
So, things like that. But mostly, it's just hard to really go back and forth. So, I guess I need to ask staff, I know there are regulations for landscaping for parking in roadways, but we really don't have regulations for the development per se, the, what's in between. So, I'd kind of like to address that. Because of the massing of the buildings, I think it's really, really, really important to concentrate on large shade trees and save the ornamental trees for scattered areas because the tree, you know, the buildings are so big, it's the shade trees that are going to help with the, with shade, but mostly reduce the scale of the buildings and make it more pedestrian. So, I, I'd like to know in all that listing, you know, what is parking and the regulations and what is left over? Because I, from just looking at the planting plan, it seemed to me that the landscaping for the interior spaces was very limited considering the scope. Aesthetically and functionally, I think it would be nice to maximize the open space between the buildings. And so, if that means moving the sidewalks closer to the building and allowing more flexibility, but when I looked at it, the, the first thing I saw was more, it would be nice to have it more park-like and not plaza-like because it seems very urban in its design.
Okay.
So, if you can maximize that open space, I think that the residents would benefit from it and, and plant as many shade trees as you possibly can.
I, I appreciate your comments on that. We, we do spend a tremendous amount of time on our landscaping. In fact, we do two landscaping plans, one that comes through here as approval, and then I do another one later on, so that if I do get closer to the end of the job and I've actually saved some money, I buy more landscaping. I do an enhanced landscaping plan, which then I add additional plantings where I see appropriate, you know, just to help out. But what I've done here with this, and what we try to do, especially along the rail line, is to create more evergreens there. So, try to create more of a visual buffer to the rail system and the noise that's on the other side, which obviously, we had one of our neighbors, you know, indicate that they have a, a plant there that takes metals and scraps it and makes a lot of noise. So, we're trying to mitigate that with evergreens, both from a visually and from a noise standpoint. So, we planted a lot more within the road, the parking lot areas along that edge. And then when we start getting into the, the actual center section, just again, trying to create this park field, but in moving the, the walkways or the paths closer to just again, trying to create this park field, but in moving the walkways or the paths closer to the units, then you get into issues with people being too close walking by that could look into a unit, and then that just gets into an issue of safety and privacy, so.
Well, you have them closer to, you have the sidewalks closer to the entrance side, to the building.
To the entrance.
I think. It's hard to tell with the scale, but I guess if you're using the evergreens in the parking islands as screening?
Yeah, along the, the east side.
On the south, along the railroad, which is down here.
On the railroad. Right on there.
And how, why does that?
That's all a screen down there. I think it's ten feet.
Okay, so they're like arborvities or something like that?
Well, not in the, because we have little islands in the parking lot. So there's like every six spaces or eight spaces, there's another island that used, could be a parking space, is now a planting space.
The ones that I see right there?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I guess.
So there's an evergreen, more of a hedge row.
That I, okay, that I see now.
And then these are also being used as screen trees to just further buffer the railroad.
Well, I think that even if they're evergreens, it'll be a better visual screen than, because the evergreens that you have there will never mitigate the noise.
Oh, yeah. I agree.
Yeah.
It, it helps.
So I wouldn't waste that space with, I would just put more shade trees in those spaces, because that's what, they're there for the cars, I guess. So that, my, my point is that we, in this site, it's better to maximize the landscape improvements in the shade trees, because they take the longest to mature, and that I don't know what that number is and what we can ask for in the living residential space. I know what we can ask for for the parking, and I guess I just want to make sure staff has made sure that those plants are not being used in the center courtyard spaces and lawn areas, that they should relate directly to the asphalt.
Right, and I think there's a, there's a, they have to be within eight feet of the parking lot to be counted towards the, the count that we need for the parking lot.
Yeah, and it seems like you probably need a lot.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep, and there's also percentage of ornamental versus deciduous. So as far as beyond the parking lot, when looking at the landscaping, we have percentage for diversity, and there's only a certain amount that can be ornamental versus deciduous. So that's, that's the way that we can, beyond the parking lot, that's kind of the way that we can look at.
Right, but in that list that they have, they were calling under-story trees, large deciduous trees, and they're not.
That was a comment that I had made for them to.
Yeah, so that's the kind of conflict. It's hard to tell exactly what they're counting. So anyway, I'm done.
Could you go to the, the intersection plan in Langdon at South Main? One thing I found really difficult, you have that, yeah, the zoomed-in site plan, I think it's three-three, I think? It was kind of hard to tell exactly what you were doing there, because the existing conditions underneath are turned off?
Well, yeah, they're not really turned off. They haven't been surveyed yet, so we're, we're trying to work through, we're trying to work through the negotiation with staff to figure out exactly what's needed there, so.
Okay.
So we haven't actually surveyed, other than just the direct intersection.
Okay, the reason I ask is I did note there are poles on the opposite side of the street. You're talking about?
There.
There, but there's a guy pole and a telephone pole.
Yeah.
Down Maitland. The other concern I have is, you're actually moving kind of the center line or this lane closer in this drawing to Langdon. And now you're striping Langdon, where it's not striped today. So I'm concerned with, today, large vehicles use all of Langdon that they need to go out, make their right-hand turn and head up. And once you do this, you're now going to force the center line, and you're going to potentially move the travel lane northbound closer. Can vehicles with that very, very hard right turn make it without crossing into the left turn lane? Because there could be one or more vehicles waiting there, that could be an issue, or they could turn in and a car pulls in to utilize it, and you could have a potential for an accident. The other thing is, you said you're not doing any lighting up Langdon along the pedestrian, but you're now introducing a crosswalk in an area where there's no other street lighting and there are no crosswalks. I would recommend that you work with staff and whatnot to consider whether there is a light put at that corner to light that crosswalk.
Say a street light or?
Something. There is a pole right there, right at the end of that ramp, so if it makes sense and it can be worked out, and I know that needs to be talked about probably with council, but I won't call it a mid-block crossing, because there is an intersection there, but there's nothing in that area today. The sidewalk doesn't continue down that side of the road, so that, that is going to be where people are going to utilize to cross. Yeah, so I'll be interested to see how you get this all to fit. Agreed.
Conceivably, you could do, you could do, well, you can do phase one without any changes.
That's right.
Okay, other comments from the board? Any other comments from staff? Yes?
Sorry, I want to talk about landscaping again. With regard to the office building and the residential buildings, so this kind of ties in also with the ADR comment. I think, I'm not exactly sure where I started. There's things that you could do to make those office buildings relate better to the residential units, to the residential buildings on the other side, and one of those things is landscaping. So, of course, it would be our preference that there's a possibility that multiple businesses might go in back there across from the residential buildings, whether it be like a little cafe or, you know, whatever, different offices. I, I don't know if your intention is to target one office user and try to get them to fill the whole building, or whether you're thinking you might have multiple office users, because you said you don't know who you're, who they are. So my thinking, from our perspective, since you don't know who they are, we would rather see multiple entrances on that back of that building to show that, ideal would be that you have a few different users, I don't, I don't know, from our perspective, maybe not from yours, I don't know, but that there's a possibility that you could have, you know, here's a realtor, and here's a whatever, here's a real estate guy, and here, here's some other real estate guy, and that you would have, and even if you didn't do that, you could put some alliteration on the building, some ins and outs, or changes in materials or architectural treatments to make it read like not the back of a building. So it's awesome that you do have those entrances on the corner, and I think that's great, especially if you end up with only one user, but you can still make that building read as either multiple buildings or not just a flat box. You know, it, it's good that there are windows there. But again, you know, some type of architectural treatment, the way you've done with the residential buildings, those are big massive buildings, but they don't read that way because of the good job your architect's done with breaking them up visually. And the other thing is, of course, landscaping, so putting some type of shrubs or, you know, different variations in height of landscaping along there. There are things that you can do to make those spaces fit together better aesthetically, if not functionally. But again, I think we're making the plug that since you don't even know who's going to be there, it would be awesome if you were showing the possibility of some kind of relationship between those buildings functionally. And then with the landscaping, I don't know if you've proposed it, but there should be some type of vegetative buffer around the parking area, like a three-foot-high opaque screen of evergreens or something like that?
Which parking areas are your?
Your parking areas along the office. So between Langdon Ave and your parking area, you've got the sidewalk, so there should be some, there should be some screening there, you know, some type of evergreen shrubs to make a nice buffer. When I say buffer, I don't mean, you know, thirty-foot wide, twenty-foot tall. I'm talking about three-foot-tall evergreens, just to give some separation there between the parking and the street, or the pedestrians and the parking and the sidewalks. And I would do that along any street, whether it's the, whether it's Langdon Ave, or whether it's the, you know, adjacent to Evo, you know, the street between there. I'm not talking about the residential, because that, you're going to have stuff around anyway, you know, it's going to be the shoreline protection buffer. I'm just talking about the spaces that are immediately adjacent to the sidewalks.
So there's going to be a fence around the project? I know there's a fence along the railroad side.
Yeah, along the railroad side and then along the conservation area as well. So what we're doing, we got to, as you know, the site is environmentally, you know, a problem, so I need to make sure.
Challenge.
Thank you. He used a better word than I did. So I need to make sure that, you know, people just don't go into those other areas. And that, and that includes the office space, so if we do get done before the office done, is done, I'll have a fence there. Now, when the office is done, that fence will be removed, and then everything will go into place at that point in time.
And then the gate that we saw in the overview will just dead-end right at the corner of the building, is that?
Yeah, that gate is just an emergency gate, so if a fire truck has to break through, if it's an emergency or whatever, they can or cut it or whatever, it's just a swing out.
Breakthrough would be kind of cool.
Along to my cars, not to the other side.
Peter wouldn't like it, Peter wouldn't like it if they just broke through, but. Okay, any other questions from the board?
I just, one quick one, you alluded to the fact that you have projects all the way down to Virginia. Just from the standpoint, do you do any kind of security onsite, permanent security, or?
We do, we do. We, we go.
There's a little car that drives through with a little yellow light going on, like the mall?
No, we'll have cameras, the doors themselves, we'll have a key swipe card access to them, so we constantly monitor those things.
Okay. It's not required, I just.
No, no.
How you do it elsewhere?
Yeah, no, safety is important. Obviously, you know, we go for the state tax credits, and obviously we're constantly audited, and we need to make sure that we keep the places up.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm going to send you guys back. I think there's maybe somebody here that wants to speak to this, so. All right, who's first? All right, I saw, Mr. Swiker, come on up. He had the quick hand.
I'm used to it.
You're used to it. Welcome back. It's been an awful long time since I've seen you sitting in that chair.
Well, you know, you folks are quite as not, you know, as the school board, I mean, they've been having in-person and hybrid meetings for nearly a year now. But anyway.
I thought you were going to say we weren't quite as volatile, and you didn't need to come, so. But I appreciate it. So if you could just state your name for the record?
Okay, my name is Roy Swiker. I live in Concord, and I have just a few comments on this based on what I've seen in the neighborhood. I can't tell you what people do in other cities, and I know the rent is so expensive in Concord that, you know, people are really cramming into apartments. Even a one-bedroom apartment would maybe have two young people living there, and, you know, they'd both be working, no kids, they both have cars. Then they might have a third vehicle, because one of them is an electrician or something and brings a truck home at night, so. I'm going to say that even two vehicles per unit may not be what you're expecting of some of the people here, so I think, you know, you need to be really careful about, you know, telling them one and a half's enough. And then I know one person across the street is one of eight siblings, so if they have a cookout and invite even half their siblings, you know, that's a whole other bunch of cars that got to park someplace. It's not just the people who live in a unit that go there, so I would like to, you know, see, be careful about the number of parking spaces. And the other thing has to do with Main Street and moving those utility poles. I mean, they said a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I mean, that's all. That's like less than the price of one unit, probably. And how many cars a day are going by there? If each car was willing to pay ten cents to have a safer, you know, travel, because the road is widened a little bit more, then you'd pay that a hundred and fifty grand. What, in a month, a few months? You know, I think that really, you know, saying they can't move the poles because it costs a hundred and fifty thousand is ridiculous. If there's no room to move within the right-of-way, you know, all over the city, we're making people bury utilities. If they can't put the poles in the right-of-way, bury them. I think that, you know, saying you can't widen the street because of the utility poles is ridiculous. Anyway, thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Swiker? Thank you very much for your testimony. Sir?
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
My name is Paul Alberston. I live down the south end, lived down the south end since about two thousand, and, I'm sorry, nineteen ninety-seven.
You said you reside in Concord?
I am. You guys covered a lot of turf in the presentation and in your Q and A. I'd like to make a couple of comments, not in any specific order, but speaking against any approval of item seventy and seven F. My big concern is not so much building residential units within the city. I don't think anyone would disagree that affordable housing is necessary and needed. I think, however, that this location is not suited for that, for that use. I noticed during the flybys, during the presentations, you couldn't see any of the adjacent properties, and that's, that's worthy to note, because when you look across from, from the proposed buildings across the railroad tracks, it's all industrial up along railroad tracks. Heavy commercial and businesses along the Hall Street area. When you look towards South Main Street, certainly, the word that was used to describe the buffer between the main buildings and South Main Street was heavily vegetated. But if you look at a, at an overhead view, a satellite view, even from Google Earth, you'll see heavily vegetated, it's a relative term. Vegetation from a recent Google, Google Maps indicates trees do not predominate that area. So while it's vegetated, it may not be, it may not be buffered from view or from noise from that area. You have to also ask yourself, if you were moving down there, would you want your family to move down there? And I say that not to be flip, but to point out what the prior use of that property was. The prior use of that property was for railroad use. I don't know if anyone on, on the planning board or in the audience had gone down and walked that area, but I walked that area about twenty years ago. I fished in the south end marsh there, and I can tell you that, that within that marsh, the edges of that marsh are discarded railroad ties and discarded railroad metal from the, from the former use. So if you have a child in that area, you know that's an attractive area for a kid down in that marsh. And I think I would posit that, that anyone with a child wouldn't want their child walking down by that, by that marsh area, just because of the, of the problems there. Same with the, with the underlying land from the, from the prior use. I think in the applicant's own words, he talks about the layer of urban fill, and this was in several of his documents, and I just did a quick review during the course of today. He talked about layers of urban fill material, as well as groundwater contamination in the vicinity of the, of the commercial buildings, that being a concern. And then he goes into talking about stormwater and rain, 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 and rainwater. But if you're raising a family, I think that's a consideration, what was the prior use down around there. What's the exposure going to be? And I don't know if that's been adequately addressed from, from my quick read of the documents today. I don't think that it was. About twenty, twenty, about twenty years ago, there was a proposed use of that facility down at that property that a big question came about for life safety issues. One of those questions was the use of alternative entrances and exits to the area. And that issue wasn't at-grade or below-grade crossing over the B and M railroad. And I remember that was a big issue that the conversations had to do with a second entrance, a back entrance, in the event that the front entrance was somehow blocked. And I, I propose to you today that that still remains an issue, and in fact is more of an issue, because it's going to be the proposed use is for residential use, and fairly heavy and dense residential use, too. So if there is an issue with getting any emergency services down from South Main Street into that residential area, that's compromised. I didn't see in the plans any alternative method to enter the property. If I missed it, I'll be glad to be corrected, but I didn't see it in any of the, in any of the individual drawings. The railroad itself is still being used, used fairly, fairly regularly. I wouldn't say heavily, but I would say on a regular basis. And my concern with that would be a lifestyle, a quality of life issue for the residents. Again, going to suitability of the property for its proposed use. I don't think that the, that the proximity to the railroad tracks makes it a, a quality life area for, for the residents. The snow removal, it was a long conversation, exchange about snow removal and snow coverage. I noticed from the overhead flyby animation that the buildings were fairly, the commercial buildings were fairly close to the, to the sidewalks. The parking areas were fairly close to the, to the green areas, and the buildings were, were not that far set back from the, from, from the parking areas. Frankly, I don't see where you're going to put a lot of the trees, or I'm sorry, a lot of the snow. Add in the, the proposed green plan, greenscaping, landscaping plan that was shown, and you see the, the proposed landscaping plan actually blocked access for any snow to be pushed on, onto somebody adjacent open property without compromising those individual plants or not put in there to begin with. I'll defer to you to have follow-up questions with the, with the developer about that issue, but frankly, I see that as a, as an issue. I agree with Mr. Swiker. Roy makes a good point when he put, when he points out about the, the parking issue. The news reports indicated that this was, is a workforce house, the intent is for workforce housing. Now, in a, in a workforce pay structure, I'm willing to bet that if a couple bet that if a couple lives there, both members of that couple are gonna be working. Both members are gonna be driving cars. And so that puts, that puts two cars per unit. If they have a, a teenage, one or two teenagers, they may have a third car. Mr. Swiker pointed out, people driving their business cars home. That bumps it up to three. So I agree with him that there's a real issue in my approximation of allowing a 1.5 car use per, per proposed unit. And I would caution against allowing that. That sort of summarizes my, my main concern. It's a lifestyle issue. As I said, I don't believe the issue, the area is suited for the proposed use. I would ask you to deny both of the items that are on the agenda, and I would certainly answer any questions that you all may have.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any questions for Mr. Halverson?
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Can you sign that form?
I was just gonna do that.
Oh, perfect, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Sir? Welcome. If you could state your name for the record?
My name is, do I have, is this, my name is William.
No, you can just, just speak normally. It'll pick you up.
Okay. We reside on.
Sorry, what was your name again? I'm sorry, William?
William Ulbrich.
Ulbrich, thank you.
U-L-B-R-I-C-H. We reside on South Main Street, and we're very familiar with the traffic pattern along that right away. I have several questions with regard to the entrance onto, what is that, Langhorne?
Langdon.
Langdon.
Langdon Road. There's some talk about widening the road. Now, are they talking about just widening several hundred feet on both sides of Langdon Road, or are they considering widening the whole length of the road, or is that a city project?
They're talking about widening South Main Street at that intersection, so.
Only.
A few hundred feet up on one side, a few hundred feet up, or 150, whatever it might be, up on either side of it. To create, what they wanna do, the idea is to create a left-turning lane as you're heading south. So nothing north, it's just gonna divert a little bit, it's gonna go off-center a little bit, and then create a left-turning lane so two or three cars could queue up if they needed to, to turn left and not block traffic.
Okay. Now, the, the radius for turning at the, the entrance to, to South Main Street, I think that if this is, proposal is agreed upon, I think there should be a larger radius at that corner of the intersection to accommodate larger vehicles.
Like buses?
And make the turning ratio easier for whoever is going in and out of there.
So heading north?
Both directions.
Okay.
Both directions. Because if you're approaching it from the south into the northbound approach, you wanna be able to turn gradually into the development, not that you have to make a hard right turn into the development. So that might free up the traffic to flow more smoothly. The other, the other question that was brought up by the previous speaker, I believe strongly that you need another approach to this project other than Langhorne Road. Or continue Langhorne Road across the tracks and bring it out onto Hall Street. So you have two means of egress and regress. The, that's a, that's a very good point that the gentleman made. Now, the, the other issue is the buildings themselves, the residential buildings. Does anyone here know what the construction configuration is with regard to the attic space in these buildings? Are there fire breaks in the length of that building?
I, I don't know that, but I'm sure we can ask the question. I'm sure, I'm sure there will be, and they'll be built, they'll be built to code.
Yeah, I'm sure the fire department will speak up on that.
Absolutely.
But there should be fire breaks between the units, and that should extend all the way to the roof surface. So that if you get a fire in the attic, it doesn't run the length of the building. The other area of concern to me is the amount of entrances into the building. I didn't hear anything mentioned about, or maybe I missed it, fire exits in case there was a fire in the building. You can't divert all the people that live in those buildings out of, into one exit position. There should be possibly one into the courtyard, and it should be a reasonable size. And there should also be, as in the plan, I'm sure, the entrances in the front of the building facing the street.
Yeah, there's two, there's a main entrance which will be for guests to come in and residents to come in, swipe a card, and go up and down the stairs. There's a residence-only entrance on the front as well, so there's two on the front, and then there's a residence-only on the back as well. So there's three, there's three entrances to each building, residential buildings.
Okay. Now, I'm assuming, I haven't seen the plan. I'm assuming that when you enter the building, you're gonna have a hallway that runs the length of the building to reach given apartments. Where, if the stairwells are blocked, how do the people get out of those buildings? There should be an opening at each end with a fire escape for safety.
Okay.
And this, again, is just conjunction of my part. I'm concerned about the traffic volume pickup in that location. You have a downward approach on both sides to a valley, and sometimes people tend to be very speedy in their driving along the road. And if you have a blockage of traffic, they could run right into a snag there. And I don't know if it was discussed, but there should seriously be discussing a traffic signal if this project goes through at that location. Okay, I thank you very much for your time.
Okay. Questions from?
We'll see what happens.
Thank you very much.
I'm sorry, did you sign that sheet, sir?
No, I did not.
Please, thank you.
Who's next? Yep, gentleman in the back there, yep. You can sit right there if you'd like. If you could state your name for the record?
I am Phil Corber. I live on South Main. I abut the conservation, that was a word that kept coming up. I abut the, the South End Marsh.
Okay.
So, this plan doesn't take into consideration the count, the impact it'll have on the Concord school system. I have two children in the school system. I don't know if I expect the developers to really think about that, but I am expecting you guys to. The apartments, it's a mix of one and twos, applicant says 60/40, one and two, or 50/50. There's 96 apartments each. So some bedrooms, they may not have any kids, but they could. And some two-bedrooms may have more than one child. And currently, Abbott Downing, that's the school system in which these children would be going to, has enrollment of 387, I checked. So an influx of 50 to 100 kids would be a 12 to 26 increase in enrollment. Long-term, you think about all the apartments that would come in over the five or six years, could be up there is about 50% increase, and that is concerning. There'd be more need for teachers, more space for the buildings. I mean, we're looking at building runlet right now. If you can have that, plus coupled with what come down on Manchester Street, the amount of apartments there, the impact on the school system, particularly in runlet, could be impressive. Additionally, you'd have more kids getting dropped off and picked up in the morning, which is gonna bring me to my second reason. So the second reason is these children in this particular development are gonna be required to walk to school as they're within the boundaries of one for the elementary school, 1.5 for runlet, and two miles for early high school. It's a lot of kids crossing the street in the morning, especially considering the in-house traffic from the, their own apartment complex. Now, there was the, I remember right, the singular crosswalk there that would connect to the other side of South Main, which I assume then, the way those kids would go to schools would have to be crossed over there, walk up a little bit to the street to Pillsbury?
Yep.
And then Pillsbury over. That's putting a lot of assumptions, because I think technically if you go to Pillsbury, if you went left instead, down to Holly, you'd get to Abbott Downing a little bit faster. But the traffic impact study doesn't take into consideration the pedestrians that walk by, let alone students. And many of people walk, they bike, they jog on South Main, and it's not safe. And this is something I have personal experience with, is both my children are required to walk to school. Requires them right now to cross South Main at one of the busiest times of the day, as pointed out in the traffic impact study, and car speed with impunity. Zero regard for the fact that this is literally a neighborhood, it's not some dressing, phrasing, my third reason, perhaps I feel the most important one. Sheldon, before me, talked about there is a tendency, it was tend to speed, be speedy, I think was the phrase. It's not a tend. They are speedy on that road. South Main's incredibly busy, sometimes dangerous, and sometimes unpoliced. The traffic impact study said it'd be no big deal, had 50% in traffic every day in the afternoons, 11% in the mornings, which was page 13 in the traffic impact study, and they can justify that, you know, adding also the plus or minus 8% every day. So you're looking at maybe 23, 19% higher. South Main is becoming a cut-through to 93. It's the way it is. I see it every day. One thing, it wasn't clear in the image of the intersection of Langdon and South Main, was there be a left-hand turn lane into Langdon? Or would it only be a right-hand? Or was it just left and out of Langdon onto South Main to go south toward the highway? Or was there a left, also a left-hand turn into Langdon going south? There was?
Yes.
There'd been two accidents right side of my house. One was me. I was rear-ended. Someone's coming down really fast, I stopped to make a left-hand turn to my driveway, and I got hit from behind. My neighbor also got hit backing out of her driveway. I saw it. The amount of cars, the amount of apartments that are gonna come into this, my concern is how many more cars are gonna be using my road as a cut-through of the highway. It did say here, I think, so the traffic impact study most definitely didn't understand the new use. So they said on page 11, say that most people, 57%, would be turning right or heading north on Langdon, therefore no treatment with the intersection. Now, we're talking about a left-hand turn lane, which is nice. And also both sides of it. Because if you ask anybody from Vinnie's down to people in Chopper Street, everybody's gonna tell you, they use exit 12 for 93. They don't go up to 13. Why would I go to 13? There's three lights. I can go down south, be on the highway in 30 seconds. On page five, the traffic impact study notes the morning peak, 50% of the traffic's traveling northbound. And during the evening peak, 63% travels southbound. The intersection of Langdon and South would need that treatment, so I'm glad to see that that's being addressed there. But again, the traffic impact study made a fairly interesting assumption, there's plenty of room for a car to bypass, so I'm glad it's now been addressed. I don't think you're gonna, I think you're gonna need that left-hand turn lane earlier than phase two, not just in phase one, for both sides, because there's simply, I don't think, not enough room to make that left turn from South Main into Langdon or onto Langdon. There's a large-scale commercial-type housing that doesn't seem to fit in the South End. South End is now a meandering country road, it's a busy city street that's become unmanageable with this new traffic introduced. There's a reason I lived in a complex in Manchester for only a year and have moved here in Concord for the last 10. The ambiance, the small-city feel, and the people, we are Manchester, we're not trying to be. The master plan for Concord confirms that this vision of Concord, as well as a vision for the community. So if I go to section three, bulleye, page six, the master plan promote the residential infill with the urban growth boundary in existing villages and neighborhoods, the traditional architecture forms and densities that mimic the traditional older neighborhoods of the city, containing mixtures of single-family homes, duplexes, and structures, were up to four dwelling units and variable-sized lots to be developed in a grid-blocked pattern which promotes connectivity with the neighborhood. I know these are a good idea. I think it's gonna add a lot of traffic to it. I do appreciate the need for affordable housing. If not, we're not at us altogether, a reduction in it, you wanna save money, get rid of the fifth building. Simple as that. That's all I have.
Any questions? Thank you very much for your testimony.
Thank you, board.
Good evening.
Good evening.
John McGrath. I live at 303 South Main Street. And I can't speak as eloquently as he did about the traffic situation there, but I, I have a high school-age student, and he has to walk every day because he's, it's too close for the bus route. And I think you gotta have that traffic impact study, because you're gonna have no choice but to put a walk signal across South Main Street. And that's gonna create bottlenecks, it's gonna prevent me from backing out of my driveway, because it's tough enough now, just because of the amount of traffic. And I think if you have a traffic light, it's gonna add to it even more. I agree, there's no room for a right-hand lane there because it's all empty parking lot on the right side there, and it'd be pretty difficult to put something there. The buses need quite the wide turning there to get in and out. And the other one thing I wanted to comment on is, I know you said there's a vegetative buffer on the, on the wetland area there. That, that's true for about four and a half months of the year. And then I can see the train go by from my deck. So I'll see that entire development, and I'm not too keen on seeing that. I, I agree, we should have more housing. I work for the largest landlord in the Northeast. And I can guarantee you that one and a half cars, or 1.2 cars is, that might be great in Virginia, but that's not what it is up here. And so I'm opposed to it on that piece of property. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from Mr. McGrath? Thank you for your testimony.
Sure.
Who's next? Sir? I, I got you over here. Come on up.
Hi, could you state your name for the record?
Hello, good evening, board members. My name's Chris Swiniarsky. I'm an attorney with McLean Middleton. I'm here tonight on behalf of Polarized New England Company, who is in a butter directly to the east, right across the railroad tracks specifically. We're, we're not currently opposed to this project at all, but I did want all interested parties, and specifically the public, to be on notice of what we do. We're a medical, uh, sorry, a metal recycling facility.
We wish you were medical recycling.
Sure, that's better, actually. No, that could get kinda gross, but.
It's less loud and.
But we're not. So, you know, as you can imagine, we, we've got metal shredders, we've got crushers, we've got excavators with grapple cranes on them. We have metal coming in by rail, by tractor-trailers. Now, it's possible to conceive that somebody someday in this development may claim they didn't know about us, or they didn't know what we were doing. I don't, I don't know where they make that claim. They might make it to my client, they might make it to the applicant. They're probably going to start by making it to the city, to the planning department, most likely. So because of that, I, I think that it helps everybody, not, not just my client, but really the applicant and the city, to have some sort of requirement to acknowledge that. I, I think, you know, the most effective place is probably in the occupancy agreements for, for people who would be either living or, or businesses that would be renting. But there are various places it could be done. And, and that's really all I, I had to say. I just really wanted people to be aware of what is going on across the tracks.
Yep, great. And I got your letter, and we, we did see your letter as part of the packet. We don't wanna have it be part of the formal approval or denial process, but certainly from the occupancy perspective and working with the, working with the, the ownership there, hey, it's, it could be loud, and here's the, here's the, here's the peak hours, or the, you know, the operating hours or whatnot. So, great. Thank you very much for your testimony.
Thank you.
Who's next? I saw another hand go up. Yes, sir, come on up. Hi, could you state your name for the record? Hi, could you state your name for the record?
Uh, my name's William Remington, and I'm a resident of Concord, New Hampshire. Also a retired locomotive engineer, and retired from my own business, which is Remington Transportation. I'm here just to specify what has happened throughout the years of this contamination of the property. And that is, you gotta look at the soil. Soil probably would have to be dug out for about three, four feet, because of creosil from ties, coal dust, metal. The, uh, washing of cars or locomotives with detergents that were probably not even around today because they're hazardous material substance. It's all leached into the ground for years, and I've seen a lot of superfund sites being dug up by the right-ofways where purple dirt actually showed up. My suggestion would be to clean all the soil out and reclaim it. Fencing, the fencing along the right-ofway, sure is great, but are they gonna inspect it on a regular basis? Are they gonna maintain it on a regular basis? Because Steinbeck has issues with their fence where people cut holes in it all the time. Another thing, there should be signs put up, "No trespassing due to railroad property." That kinda keeps the liability to one side. Another thing is, when I used to drive truck, I used to park my rig down there. I ran containers out of Boston Connolly Terminal. And, uh, I'll tell ya, to make that right turn, just with my tractor to go home, I used to have to take two lanes. Now, if you go in the other low boy and come out with a low boy, you're gonna take up more than that. You're gonna take up Langdon and South Main Street to get out of there, due to the gooseneck in the way of pivots. The left turn is just as bad, because in the winter months, it all depends who maintains the property in the right-ofway as far as the road goes on Langdon Ave. My suggestion would be probably streetlights, crosswalk light, like the other gentleman had said. But there should be striping far enough back so trucks can exit out of the place. The only other issue with that would be the pitch coming out of there. I've actually gotten stuck trying to get out of there with eighty-plus thousand pounds of weight. So my drive tires couldn't even get me out of there. Concord Coach had to actually come out and take their bucket loader and block, block traffic for me, so I could get out. Because I had to back down that little grade and get a running start for it. And the other thing, as far as another way of egress or some kind of entrance for fire department, I know there's been studies done here in Concord about Stewart Street and continuing down that way under the, uh, was it Manchester Street Bridge or Water Street?
Water Street Bridge, yep.
And, uh, maybe that would be a thought, to try to open that up more. And as far as the railroad goes, there's been talks about running thirty, forty-car unit trains every day of gravel out of Tilton. So that's an increase in traffic on your railroad right-ofway. There's even future plans of bringing the commuter rail to Concord. CSX is in the process of buying the B and M or Pan Am Railways. So, and they wanna keep this corridor all the way to Concord. There's a reason for that, I'm sure, so they can strategize on their way of creating more business by rail. So you're gonna see an increase in freight traffic by rail coming up here, probably. So I end it here and leave it up to you folks, because you're gonna be the decision-makers. If you have any questions, feel free.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. For your testimony. Okay. Who's next? Yes, sir.
Evening.
Hi, if you could state your name for the record?
Uh, Ian McGregor, resident, South Concord. And, uh, it's late, so I'm gonna try to be quick. Um, but I just wanted to state, uh, last year, we moved from the north side of Concord to the south end. Um, we were renting, we bought a house. Um, our rent, you know, the difference between a mortgage and a rent was three hundred dollars. And we significantly increased, like, the living space that we had. So affordable rental properties in Concord is a problem. Just wanted to say that upfront. Um, a general question, when this thing is done, water, sewer, road, pavement reconstruction, who owns that? Is that part of the condominium, or is that part of the city, then?
Inside that area, it'll be part of the condominium, part of the, the property owner.
So any improvements to the infrastructure are paid by the...
From the city, from the city's right-ofway and...
Okay. So there, there will be a city right-ofway within the condominium?
No.
Okay. Just checking.
Along the edge of the road.
Mm-hmm. On South Main, yep. Um, did the traffic study include any pedestrian and bike traffic along South Main? Or along Langdon at that point?
Yeah, I don't know. I don't think so.
Do we know the answer to that? Gary, you're right.
Um, I mean, I know that we acknowledged bike traffic through the inclusion of bike lanes in the proposed, um, striping plan.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I couldn't answer specifically what extent the analysis included, um, yeah, pedestrians and bikes.
Um, like I said before, I live on the south end. Um, I've been a member at the New Hampshire Climbing Fitness since two thousand seventeen. Um, I get my car serviced at Gary's. I am a regular at S and W. Ride my bike down there all the time. Speeding is a huge problem. The speed limit there is thirty miles an hour. When I'm, I, yeah, when I'm driving that, I remember the first time I was driving it, and I looked for it. I mean, I'm not gonna say how fast I was going, but I was definitely going faster than thirty. Yeah. And it, it's, it's easy to do, because it is this wide-open corridor. And then you realize that there are, you know, houses with driveways that people have to get in and out of. Um, when it comes to a left-turning lane, I mean, I've got five brothers and sisters. I think every one of them has been either rear-ended or T-boned in a left-turning accident. Left turns are dangerous, we all know that. Put a median up, don't allow left turns. It would be amazing, and have it be a rollover median, sloped granite curb. You can get big trucks over there if you need to. Fire trucks can make a left turn. But anybody in their Honda Civic can't get over that, or they don't want to. Um, it also would be nice to see, I saw on the left-turn detail, there were eleven-foot-wide lanes at that intersection. I think eleven or ten-foot lanes are the correct width of lane for that street. Lower the speed limit to twenty miles an hour. Like, that's what it should be. That is, that's the speed limit in front of school zones. Make it twenty miles an hour on all of South Street. Make it a chore to have to come down there to get on the freeway. We have two very good, not need to have two or three cars per unit if somebody could actually take a bus to where they work. It's just a point, there's no bus route on South Main. Um, the parking lot, the plan isn't up anymore, but it really looked like you guys had created a quarter-mile drag strip. If I'm sixteen and I just got my driver's license, you've got a twenty-four-foot-wide parking aisle and a dead straight line all the way in front of every single building. If it's midnight, I know what I'm gonna do with my friends. If you could take those parking islands and create a pinch point. I've been living in New Hampshire long enough to know that there are more than expected one-way traffic bridges all over the state. If you could make a one-way area with traffic islands to only allow, you know, one car at a time, and if you're a sixteen-year-old kid, you're actually kinda nervous if you're going through there faster than twenty-five miles an hour. That's, you know, you can also do the opposite. Instead of having a pinch point, put an island there, and then, you know, parking areas around that, so you can't go in a straight line. That's just a, a point on the parking design route. Um, another thing, if you have people that live there during the day, or live there and then drive away, and that whole parking area is gonna be empty for residents and then full for business, and then five o'clock comes around, and the business people all go home, and the residents all come home, you've always got an empty parking lot, you've always got impervious surface that's creating excess runoff, that's creating a heat island. Would it be possible for the planning board in the city of Concord to accept, as well as the development, to be, accept the Planet Fitness model? You have people that are using the same resource, which is parking, on different times of the day. Planet Fitness sells hundreds and thousands of memberships, because they know that nobody's gonna be all at the gym at the same time. So if you could exchange that, that would be something innovative, that would be good to see. I think it's something that can greatly reduce the impervious area. If you had a parking structure, you could sell leases to spots for both the commercial businesses as well as the residents. Also, um, to the gentleman who mentioned that if you're gonna make a right-hand turn on Langdon to go up Pillsbury, um, Pillsbury also looks like an airport runway. I couldn't tell, it's probably sixty feet wide. And as far as twenty-twenty started out, uh, in the medical complex as well as the D H R, there's nobody that parks there. Those parking lots are empty, and the street, you could park, you know, two cars deep and still be able to go on that street. So perhaps, eh, if there are people that want to have, you know, four or five vehicles in their two-bedroom unit, you can set up some sort of parking lease agreement with other businesses around the area. Um, the last thing I wanna mention is, if you have biking, you know, a nice bike lane down South Main, you've got bike lanes coming into the area, um, is there any sort of bike storage or bike parking area that's allocated for the units? We're a one-car family, we bike almost always, and it's very annoying to get somewhere. And, you know, my bike a lot of time takes up a parking spot, which doesn't have to. Um, that's it. You guys have any questions?
Great. Questions from Mr. McGrath? No, thank you. Thank you very much for your testimony.
Anything?
Nope, we're good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. I think I saw another hand over here. Yes, sir, in the front, or in the back, sorry. You are. You're hot. If you could state your name for the record?
I tell you what I am, who I am. I'm a citizen, sixty years old. No, I'm eighty years old.
No.
I wish I was sixty. I've been living in Concord sixty years now. I was a retire, I'm a retired fighter, fighter.
What's your name, sir?
My name's Bo Santo.
Bo Santo. Thank you, Bo.
Okay. S Z A N T O. I'm a retired firefighter of Concord, Concord, and I drew a lot of vehicles. Engines, tankers, snorkel. As we go down South Main Street, it's better, Langdon Street really is a top-left turn because of the downhill, make a left turn. And I'm looking at this ladder over here. Hundred ninety-two apartments, they're gonna build on Langdon Street. Well, I go to, uh, buy supplies at, uh, you know, the lumber company there, okay?
Steinbeck, yeah?
Stein, Steinbeck's. So, every time I come out, I have to watch it turning either left or right, because somebody barreling down the road either direction. I try to understand this, how is it gonna affecting that building, hundred ninety-two units there? There's not gonna be any accident. I don't understand that. Now, after retired, I got into real estate. I own eight buildings in Concord. I got a lot of tenants. One of them, I own a property, next to me is pizza, it's a family house, three, three family. To get it back in South Main is a very difficult thing, because so much traffic sometime go either direction. You got lights on there, South Main Street, they backing up to my house. They have to wait, wait until finally it clears. Now you tell me, you got hundred ninety apartments, you're gonna build on Langdon Street, Langdon, okay? What are gonna, what's gonna happen? How much traffic you gonna gain at the lights? You know, you backing through a street, they're trying to backing the street, you have to watch somebody. And number of times, it has been an accident because somebody backing to the street there, somebody, boom. And they go too fast there. People crazy nowadays. I don't know what's the matter with them, young people. Right too fast. You know, just make no sense. You start off from a light there and, what, fifty miles an hour? You know, just after that, I mean, it's crazy. So anyway, you have to pay attention to what's going on, and what, what you're doing, things like that. But I am really, really, I said, didn't understand, how can you put hundred ninety-two units? I mean, I'm a landlord over here, after retired from fire department, I own ten buildings in Concord. I'm a, into real estate, but I'm looking for safety of my tenants also, you know. And I hate to see one of my tenants come, you know, nailed there, because of too much traffic. And another thing, the city of Concord stopped plowing, uh, removed snow on the left-hand side, or right-hand, right-hand side, arrived after West Street, all the way that section is towards Centol's, never been cleaned. Now, the roads are gonna get narrow and narrow and narrow. So you get close to a median like that. Now you try to back up there, you're gonna get traffic, snow this side, snow this side, sometime you can't even see. I mean, it's, I still don't understand, how can they put hundred ninety-two units in there? When the issue we have with the city, we don't have enough room to drive by. And I can tell you, I don't care about what they do, how they build it. I don't care about east or west, it doesn't matter to me. That's not my point. My point is a safety issue here. Now, if they have another way to do it, if you could look right across the hall street somewhere, build a road there, that probably would work fine. But you're gonna pump out all these vehicles into South Main Street, either left or right, right there, what do you think gonna happen? That's not gonna work. And I'm gonna tell you something. I am not just a landlord, I'm not just a firefighter retired. I was in a industry. I'm master electrician by trade. I worked for companies like David, I worked for, uh, other companies, design test equipment. Engineer designing test equipment on the prints. What you build it, it's a different thing. Same thing on highway, you can, you got prints, you design it. Not the same. I can tell you right now, you come down at one place over there, the city of Concord, because I own property up there. They designed it, nice road, you know, roundabout. But they made a sidewalk, Franklin's coming down there, hit a sharp corner like that, you go right, right over corner. I can't drive with my van. Great. City Hall, any place that engineers, y'all great, looks great. But when you do it actually, physically, it's not gonna work, because it's gonna fail every time. And I tell you, I work in industry, I was a graduate, graduate from the Technical Institute. I worked for building test equipment. And I had an engineer, okay, who was engineer, electrical engineer. He told me how to put together a motor, okay? How to put together a phase, three-phase motor, a delta, a Y. He told me, cut off the connections and soldered together. I said, I'm not gonna do it. He said, you're gonna fire. I said, then you're gonna blow up the building. I walk out here. He said, what do you mean? I said, you can't work. I said, it's numbered, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. It all have their different connection. And what are you telling me, you're gonna blow up the motor? What are you talking about? I said, well, tell you what. I wired, I soldered together, I walk out of here, and I, I say, come back to see me after that. Next thing he runs back, he said, okay, you're right.
Okay.
Don't do that.
All right.
Okay?
Yep.
So, I just wanna tell you, let's go back to that. Every action has a reaction. Either you do it right, or don't do it right.
Okay.
Okay, now, environment, just think about, all that snow is gonna be melting over there, it's snowing there. And you have to plow them.
Yep.
Like a road.
Yep.
And I got marsh over there. I tell you right now, you're gonna kill that marsh. You know that? I'm telling you now, there's gonna be another railroad station. Point to it. When I die, you people, all the nation, they kill the marsh.
Okay.
Salt, because that... Salt, because that water, you're not gonna stop it, that salt water coming out of the snow. You're not gonna stop it, it's gonna go into the marsh. So, well, that's all I gotta tell you.
Okay. And thank you for your testimony.
Okay.
Okay. I got the gentleman in the, in the back here, sitting down, sorry, sitting down, come on up. Good evening, if you could state your name for the record?
Sure, my name is Peter Engel, I live at three fifty-nine South Main Street with the, just about the southernmost property that abuts the South End Marsh. Probably have one of the best views of where this all be. We heard a lot tonight, I appreciate everything that everybody said, so I'm not gonna waste your time and reiterate the same. But for me, the elephant in the room, this gentleman just spoke about it, is the South End Marsh itself. There's a lot of talk about putting up a fence and using existing buffers and so on and so forth. We didn't see a view from the properties that abut the marsh, looking back at this development. And I'm kinda concerned in that. Right now, we see, way behind Gary's all the way to wildlife, if you will, that abuts this. And we had three-story building. What are we gonna see out of this? The effect on the marsh, excuse me, I think is gonna be substantial. We sat here twenty years ago when the Richmond Company was trying to put a development in. The marsh is unique and at the risk of sounding like the oldest person in the room, it's crazy the amount of wildlife that's in there. Bobcat, heron, pair of eagles, eagle fledling. We have a five-hundred-pound bear that comes around regularly. Deer, it's a gem in the South End. And I really think that there ought to be some thought process to how this is gonna affect that. You're talking about piling snow. I realize that it was a snow dump down there in the past, it has been. But the runoff, the existing soils aren't good to absorb the runoff because they're hazardous. So instead, we're gonna cap that and we're gonna push the runoff into the marsh. I think it's naive to think that that is not gonna substantially affect the wildlife and everybody's quality of life along that whole South End border of the South End Marsh. I mean, we have a gem down there. I realize that we need affordable housing, there's no question about it. But the way we're going about this, I don't think is right for the South End. Only other thing I'd like to talk about is the actual intersection. There's been a lot of talk about turning lanes and phasing and so on and so forth. Pedestrian-wise, putting a crosswalk across here so kids can get across, go to school. I live across from Rockingham Street and it was a challenge thirty years ago, my sons were young, to get them across the street to go to school. I mean, for us to go for a walk to get across South Main Street now, it's a challenge. And it's not because I'm sixty-six years old, it's because it's nuts, the traffic has increased dramatically. You know, we lived there for forty years. We were there when Blue Cross was down, where the Pillsbury Building is. So we saw substantial traffic then. But I'm here to tell you that, the gentleman spoke earlier, said that this is a cutoff, is exactly right. People come down Iron Works, come down Rockingham and go across and go to the interstate. And it's nuts. And we see that if, on a Sunday or on a weekend, you can see it coming down South Main Street all the way down from McDonald's, coming right down through. So you're gonna add this kind of traffic and this kind of pedestrian traffic to this without any kind of equipment besides a turning lane, I think is a recipe for disaster. You know? I understand that any mediation like that is expensive, but maybe they should take a page out of the book. If you go south on, on South Main Street, down to where Capone is, they put in there, I don't know if Capone put it in or the state put it in, but they put in a set of lights with a crosswalk so their employee, and I guess customers, could get across the road. I mean, maybe we should take a page out of their book. It's a real, it's a real dangerous intersection there and I ask you, just give it some serious thought. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from Peter Engel? Thank you for your testimony. Sir?
Good evening, my name is Ken March. I've been a resident of the South End for over twenty years now. I was really gonna try to concentrate. First of all, I wanted to thank Peter, a not-too-distant neighbor of mine. And we get the overflow where I live of the beauty from, from the marsh. Even though it's a small yard I have, we get a lot of beautiful birds and see some of the animals that he spoke about. So I think that is a precious attribute to the South End. And initially, I was gonna spend a good bit of time, which I will not do now, but to talk about the traffic that we experienced where I live. High volume and over twenty years, I can't imagine that it would ever get like this. I couldn't have imagined. The volume and noise is just obscene. You know, with vehicles that, I don't know how they pass inspection, or they don't, they couldn't. The speeding, accidents, running of the stop signs, the four-way stop is just unbelievable. I go out to mow my lawn, not unusual for me to count two or three or four people running those stop signs. And I'm not talking rolling stops. We give those people that do a rolling stop a little trophy because we appreciate that. I'm talking people that blow through there at thirty, forty-plus miles an hour.
What stop sign is that?
The four-way stop at Rockingham and Broadway.
On Broadway?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, right out my backyard of South Main and that is frightening. I go to visit the neighbors across South Main occasionally and even middle of the day, it is nerve-wracking. I would never take my dog down there, even on a leash, try to cross that because you gotta look here, look there, look back there and, you know, wait oftentimes because people just come flying down South Main. And it is a cut-through for everything. I think Google Maps may well advise people to travel that route through their Iron Works Road, Broadway, Rockingham, whatever, to avoid traffic. Because as was mentioned before, the traffic literally goes bumper to bumper at that four-way stop, both directions from, on Broadway and usually heading south down Rockingham. It's just unbelievable, it's like a-
But that's a, that's a completely different street. I mean, I know it's close.
Well, it isn't.
I know it's close, but let's-
It's all interconnected.
Let's talk about South Main and Langdon Avenue.
Okay.
That's what we're here to talk about.
Okay, very good. Well, you know, stepping back from that, I guess I was first questioning a lot of the stuff that was in the presentation, like the, the survey hasn't been completed on the Langdon Ave to South Main Street. Did I hear that correctly?
No, that was just the South Main Street where they're gonna, they did do Langdon Ave, it was just a portion of the-
Yeah, to go on South Main.
On South Main, they didn't complete the-
Yeah, but it just seems to me that that would be a pretty much of a main event, a critical component to doing a big development like this. You know, some other things I picked up on in reference to the, the South End Marsh was mentioned that seventy-five feet is the protected area, which is really a quarter of a football field. So that's not really very much difference, distance to the South End Marsh. And I just picked up on a few things during the presentation. I'm certainly no expert on any of this stuff, but it sounded to me like there was just a lot of bumps in the road. I can't have any more doors in the building. Cost, sounds like there's an awful lot of potential for drainage problem. You know, some of the water's gonna be drained into the city stuff, if I understood it correctly, and some of it's gonna go into the South End Marsh. The plowing, it said they were gonna push the snow towards the outside. Well, I think most roads in the South End use, they have salt and chemicals in them, so that's just gonna be more addition, contribution to pollution down that way. The parking issue struck me as kinda interesting, that they can only do one and a half, not two. And I'm sure that's another money-space situation. They mentioned that the road was not wide enough. And we see tractor trailers coming through Rockingham onto South Main after they're done running over your yard and your curbing and taking down the stop sign on Broadway and Rockingham. Then they go down South Main and knock the stop sign down there. So the trucks get stuck there, they don't have enough room to do what you're doing. And just about done, utility pole, that's a problem. And sandwiched in, that's a quote from, from one of the presenters. And also acknowledging it is an environmental problem. It wasn't an opportunity or anything else, it's a problem, and they know that. And to me, just looking at that stuff as a non-expert, but standing back saying, boy, if, I'm a businessperson or a person in authority like you guys as far as the planning, it looks like a classic square peg in a round hole. And that's all I really have to say and I'll sign in.
Great, thank you very much for your testimony.
Thank you.
Other questions? Yes. You're here out of order.
Sneaky like that.
Who are sneaky like that? Just for reference, Mr. Pollock is on the agenda for the next item. So that's what my reference to being out of order was on. If you could state your name for the record?
Yeah, sure, Ari Pollock of the Gallagher Firm appearing for Concord Coach Lines and their real estate entity, Langdon Street Real Estate.
So you are here in order, I apologize.
It's all right.
I thought you were here for your next item, so my apologies.
I wouldn't dare ignore instructions. Let me explain what, what I'm doing here. Concord Coach and Langdon Street own and operate land abutting Langdon and across the street from, across the private street from the subject property for the Dakota Partners Proposal. It's a big project and honestly, we're here for an embarrassingly small item. My client's site has a large paved apron that fronts along a pretty substantial stretch with Langdon. And my client uses this paved apron to park their motor coaches when they're out of service. Essentially, that's where they sleep at night when the route is over. Buses are long, large, heavy, and they require a substantial amount of maneuvering room. And so as a result of those special considerations, opportunities for conflict with other motorists, cyclists, pedestrians, any raised obstructions, out-of-the-ground curbing, landscaping, planters, need to be avoided. We filed a letter relating to these concerns, which I know is in your record, stated July ninth, twenty twenty-one. And based on the filed site plan that we found online, it does not appear that the applicant is proposing anything other than a white flush sideline coming up the northerly side of Langdon. A sidewalk, a landscape strip, a bike lane is proposed by the applicant on the southerly side. We have no concerns about that side of the street and we understand that treatment. The applicant's proposal is consistent with Concord Coach's preference to avoid these types of conflicts and it essentially preserves the status quo with the exception of a painted white line. Staff's memo indicates their preference for a companion bike line on the northerly side of Langdon. So I wanna be clear that we prefer no bike lane on the northerly side of Langdon. We also understand that staff is recommending one on both sides. We also understand that it's just counterintuitive to have a bike lane in, but not have a bike lane out. And so I think Heather earlier tonight was referencing her conversation with me earlier today where we simply had no choice but to acknowledge that it made sense to have a bike lane in, a bike lane out. But we have some requests in terms of how that lane is configured so that we can again prioritize the safety of the existing condition for moving buses around, avoiding conflicts. We'd ask that the bike lane be painted flush to the pavement with no raised elements. I think that is what staff is recommending and we're good with that.
Yep.
We'd ask that the bike lane be signed and painted as being one-way. I think this is certainly, again, the intention. The one on the southerly side of the street comes in, the one on the northerly side of the street goes out. But our biggest concern frankly is that someone biking down South Main Street and I, when I say South Main, heading south on South Main-
Turning left into Langdon Ave.
Hooks a left into the first bike lane-
Right.
And comes down at a rate of speed down the hill exactly where we're moving buses in and out of that apron.
Yep.
So some signage up on South Main that basically says, don't enter this bike lane from here, go to the other side of Langdon and use that bike lane. I'm not a sign guy, but that's, that's our, our hope. We'd love to have the entirety of the bike lane painted a distinguishable color so the bus driver knows when they're in the bike lane and hopefully a cyclist knows to stay in the bike lane. Again, all of this in the name of reducing the opportunity for a conflict. And then, if you look at the site plan where it does show the bike lane on the southerly side of Langdon, it just sort of peters out in a random location. It's not clear where it ends or why it ends where the line ends. And I don't know that that's anything other than to be determined. On the north side, if there is to be a flush painted bike lane, it would be our hope that it continues down to the terminus of Langdon Ave through our, our frontage completely. In other words, not just to have it end in some random place where the cyclist then decides, should I dart left, dart right, go in the middle of the road? Give them the painted lane to guide their travel. So again, we just assume not have a bike lane and keep it the way it is, but we also recognize that what goes in must come out. And so our, our request would be a flush painted colored bike lane with some signage one-way up only, or put differently, do not enter at the top, and then have that lane painted the full extent of Langdon Avenue.
So signage, when you say signage, you'd want signage painted, painted on the, on the, on the bike lane, like arrows up?
We'd love some shadows on the bike lane.
Yep.
I, I think a sign post at the top at Main Street that says something that instructs if you're on a bike-
Not right in front of your bus area?
Not right in front of the bus area, no, that, well, you could put it there, but it'll last about five minutes. But something that says, you know, not this bike lane, the other one.
Gotcha.
So I really appreciate you listening to what I realize is a small detail of a large project.
Now, did Heather ask you about reconfiguring the intersection for a wider arc on the right-hand side of Langdon onto South Main?
She probably knew not to.
Okay.
But I appreciate the intent of your comment.
Appreciate me bringing it up in public.
I certainly do, yes.
Any questions for Mr. Pollock? Thank you for your testimony.
Thanks for bearing with you.
Thanks very much. Don't go away because we'll be talking to you next with your other project. Okay. Anybody else? Yes, come on up. I was wondering when you were gonna come up, yes? She was here a week, she was here two weeks ago, right?
You're the only one.
You were the only ones here for the whole night.
But I have some friends today, so that's wonderful. Okay, well, I am a very, very proud lifelong member of South Main Street. And the first twenty-six years, I was born and raised just over the line, a bowl line. And then for the last fifty years-
No, that's not possible.
I know, it doesn't seem possible, doesn't it?
Not possible.
I know.
What, could we just get your name for the record?
Oh, okay, Corinne Stony. And I have lived fifty years at three thirty-seven South Main. And my sister-in-law lives in the next, so I'm talking for her too, she's at three thirty-five.
Okay.
And my concern is, twenty years ago, Suzanne, I remember, and thank goodness, Paul, you were here. Our concern was for the conservation for the marsh, along with a lot of other concerns. And in the fall, the migrating birds, that's, that's where they, that's part of their go, their trail. And you see, and the trees are full of the birds. And there's so many varieties and diversity that killing that, that marsh is taking away yet the small little hamlets- that we have left. And it's just so sad. And when they talk about moving the salt and the... I heard someone say that one of the people was saying that it's all gonna, not all, but a lot of it is going to wash into the marsh. How sad. How sad. And 20 years ago, they did a traffic study. I can't wrap my brain around stay nines like 11% and so forth, but they did a traffic study 20 years ago saying that having a super shares and a small strip mall was going to increase at peak times 500 more vehicles. Well, what does that mean today? And I was the other one that just three Wednesdays ago, I have to face out usually, but this one time I drove facing into my house, and you have to keep looking back and forth, and you have to, you feel like a rabbit jumping out, and I made it. And then you can travel on. Well, this day, they were putting a new roof across the street, totally my fault. They had a service truck parallel to the, ran right into them because I'm so concerned of avoiding the south and north traffic. So it's horrendous now. What is it going to be when you put 192? And it also said in the last, and I know it's going to be talked about, but they're also going to add five land condominiums. And they said two pad sites for future development. So is it going to just stop at the 192? And is there going to be, are they going to invite their relatives in? And so a two-bedroom will be five people in there or six people? I mean, I just think we need development. I'm all for progress, but at a much more conservative, doable. It sounds like they're trying to pack everything in, and it's just, it doesn't seem reasonable to me. So that's for now.
Any questions for Mrs. Stoney? Thank you very much for your testimony. Please, if you could.
I'll run the other room, so I'll go in the back.
Oh, boy, that's a bad sign if you gotta go in the back.
And I just retired from 35 years of teaching, and I want to enjoy that marsh.
That's right.
[laughing]
Okay. Anybody else? Any other hands? Nope. Okay. Yes, sir.
It's not my pen.
At least you won't be the only one on the back side.
That's right, yeah. If you could state your name for the record?
My name is, my name is Ben Thorne, and I live at 337 South Main. And this is my comment about tonight's meeting. I hear a lot of controversy about parking spaces. Now, one of the gentlemen got up here and testified, "The financial problem. There's not enough money to go around here." Well, you folks know, as well as I do, that when the money's tight, you start to cut somewhere. Well, we're down to one and a half or one and a quarter spaces for parking. Well, what are you going to cut? The size of the building? You're going to cut the size of the spaces? Or you're going to cut something else, the landscaping, something that they've agreed to? I don't know what's going to get cut. I hope nothing, but I don't want the project. And I'll tell you why. I live at 337 South Main. I back my car out, and I say an hour father before I do. And I'm telling you, the traffic there is unreal. Now, if you average one and a quarter spaces for 190 apartments or whatever, there's going to be so much traffic on that street, none of us will be able to move. They come down there, it's already been testified that they're reckless when they come down there. But you put 500 cars coming down there? Are you kidding me? There isn't enough space in Concord to put 500 cars coming down that street and have the people who live there live there happily? That's a traffic disaster waiting to happen. You can't do it. I can't even sit in my living room and read a book because of the traffic going by and the guys on the motorcycles and you name it, coming down that street. All right, I made one point. Finance. Something's going to be cut. What is it going to be? I don't know. It's up to the developers. I don't want the project. I'm dead set against it, as you can probably tell. I don't know what gave that away, but anyway. The... Okay, I guess I better leave it at that because I may get nasty.
Okay. We don't want that.
No, we don't want that.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Anybody else? If not, we'll have the developers come back up. Okay. So we heard a lot of testimony. I'm sure you took copious notes and heard a lot of it. We heard, obviously, I think traffic was the biggest one I've got on here. I've got some questions regarding the snow, the snow melting into the retention ponds and how that'll be handled, and the contamination into the marsh. Question on soil remediation. There was some questions on bus stops and bus routes, which are good questions. I think they're bigger questions than this project, than this project really has the ability to kind of address. I think certainly the school, you know, walking to school is one of them. But I welcome you to kind of, if you can, give us some feedback on what you heard. If you're willing to go from there.
Sure. There's a couple of things. Obviously, one that jumped out early on was about the fire, fire protection and stuff of the buildings. All our apartment buildings are fully sprinkled. So, you know, it's designed for, you know, to meet fire safety and for exit and entry to the buildings. So again, it's a fully sprinkled building at the end of the day. It's not a non-sprinkled building, which takes a tremendous load off of the fire department and everything else. So everything will meet code in that respect. It'll go through the normal building department review. We've already met with the fire department a couple times on movement and circulation and everything else, so they have plenty of access to the buildings. When it comes to snow in the marsh, obviously, we're very concerned about the marsh and making sure it's kept clean. We don't use salt. We use environmental safe measures for snow removal and for melting the snow. It's not dumping a ton of salt out there. So that's traditionally what we do.
And then just to add to that, the stormwater designs, we're required to treat stormwater before it flows off into wetlands or even to a budding land. So we have, we have to apply for an alteration of terrain permit with the state to meet those standards, which we will, or we won't get a permit. And we're doing that by, again, we're capturing all the runoff. We're putting it into a pond that treats it with vegetation before it gets released to the south end marsh. And in the other instance, we're in the commercial lot, we're treating it with actually a mechanical unit because we can't infiltrate into the graph. So again, we're treating and controlling the stormwater runoff that comes off of this site, or at least off of the paved areas and the roofs.
So just so everybody's clear, and again, we see this in almost every project that comes before us. It's not near backyard, so sometimes it's not something that's talked about a lot, but the retention pond aspect of it, the way the salt or whatever might be taken out of the water, you're putting back clean, cleanish water into the system once it goes through those ponds and once the activity takes place in those ponds. And what can't be handled through groundwater goes through into this runoff.
That's correct.
Okay.
And just for everybody's perspective, that the site actually, under the zoning ordinance, would support 225 units of housing if we were to meet the letter of the law for, I think it's 10 or 12 units per acre of buildable land on the site.
So you could put up to 225 units?
That's correct, under the zoning ordinance.
And I didn't catch, I didn't catch the way the question came up, that there was future pad sites or somebody had said something about future pad sites, but I didn't, I didn't see any of that.
No, so we're showing everything that's being proposed here. We've got two office buildings and six residential buildings. That's all that could be built here. It might be a little bit different on the commercial site. Maybe you do one building instead of two buildings, but essentially, the parking that's required for the square footage of the commercial space, that's as much as you can fit on the site.
And again, we run into, sorry, we run into, you know, we want less parking in a lot of places because we want less impervious surface. So we, again, we see developments and different projects come before us, and we squeeze you guys for less parking. We want less parking in a lot of cases because the ordinance says you need to have, you know, 85 parking spots for this spot. We push it to say, hey, can you get less parking in this particular space? So it's interesting to hear that some of the testimony we heard tonight was, you need to have all the parking spaces. And I'd counter that by saying that you don't. I mean, I think, I think there's plenty of material out there that says that I think you're probably pretty close on the 1.2 to 1.5 is what you typically see in these types of, these types of environments. So I'm sensitive to the fact that there's something to hang your hat on, but, you know, we don't want a lot of impervious surface if we don't have to have it. We don't want parking lots sitting empty just in case. And there was some testimony about, you know, splitting uses and having, you know, the commercial space turnover, and we just can't do that. You know, you got to assume every single commercial person's going to be there during the day, and every single resident is going to be there during the day, and that's how many parking spots you need, and that's what you're looking for. Go ahead, I'm sorry, didn't mean to interrupt.
No, no, you're correct in that. You know, I was just pointing out, I think, the confusion came when you talked about the number of buildings and then condos, and I think the word condo kind of got into thinking there's another development of condo buildings. That's all.
The condo, again, as we addressed in the beginning, the first part of it was the condo piece and the second part of it, so.
Correct.
Council Pierce?
Tell me, how dirty is your dirt? What, tell me about your remediation, something like that.
So the residential portion of the site actually has been studied at great length by several different environmental companies and monitored by the state. And they actually have issued a letter of no further action for the site, understanding that there are urban fills underneath the site that have some contaminants in it. So what we're doing to address that is we're actually, we provide basically a cap over the top of the urban fill. So the parking lot acts like a cap. Nobody's going to dig into that. The buildings act like a cap. Nobody's going to, you know, kids aren't going to dig in the basement. And then the landscaped areas themselves will be covered with two feet of clean soil that's imported in from off-site. So there'll be a two-foot clean soil barrier before you get down into any of the urban soils that are left. On the commercial site, which is on the north side, there is some recorded petroleum contamination. That's why this is going to stay commercial. And same thing, parking lot cap over the top of it. The buildings will be there, and the state is currently looking at what, if anything, needs to be done with the petroleum on that portion of the site. But again, that's the commercial side of the project, not the residential side.
And the retention ponds, you dig till you find clean soil, is that?
We're actually, yeah, we actually, the ponds on the south side is going to be what's called a wet pond. So we dig into the groundwater table, and what that does is it provides the ability to treat water in a special way. I won't get into the technicalities of it, but, yeah, we will be digging down below the urban fills to get to native ground in the pond.
Urban fill is, in this particular area, primarily old railroad ties, coal ash, and other miscellaneous debris from the, like, certain bits of steel and other pieces of wood from the railroad days. And that's, that's what they define as urban fill.
So it's conceivable that for years, that has potentially been polluting the marsh, and this would maybe clean up, be better because the water's being treated. So that's an argument to be made.
Yeah, there's no question, this has been here since the 1800s, so it's been there a long time.
Okay. Did we cut you off, Earl?
No, I had a follow-up, but I didn't.
Sorry, I jumped in, sorry.
No, that's fine. Different subject. You heard the testimony from Concord Coach. I was a little confused with the pads and the bikes and different colored pathways. What are your thoughts on reconciling that, if it is an issue for you?
It's not even an issue.
It's not an issue.
We're in agreement with them. We've met with Concord Coach and kind of went through their needs to see, you know, how they operate as a business, and we're in agreement with them.
Thank you.
Paint is slippery in rain and...
Paint is slippery in rain, I was just going to say.
Question is how much you want to paint, I guess.
Yeah, right.
Use a special material?
Yeah.
Shark bite.
Something on there, right?
Yeah.
Any questions?
Do it.
Suzanne?
So if you have 192 units plus the businesses, what would be like an average total of people in the morning, when people are coming, like, when there's that crossover? I mean, there's a lot of parking.
Parking?
No, like, people...
Traffic?
Yeah, that gets into the traffic study, Suzanne, and Steve is more than happy to come up and speak to the traffic.
As far as the people in the buildings, not the parking?
No, it would be based on traffic count, so you'd assume, you know...
You're just making an assumption.
The number of cars. It's based on scientific data from ITE.
So I would like to have Steve come up, but I, as long as he promises not to, not to get into too much detail, and I recognize the fact it's critically important, but Jeff can attest to the fact that the traffic engineers love their jobs, but I understand it. I just don't want to, I don't want to get into too, too much detail. I apologize in advance, but...
I hope my reputation didn't precede you.
No, it didn't. It wasn't anything to do with you in per se, it was just in general. I just want to, I want to be quick on parking or on traffic in particular.
Can I have two minutes and then we'll answer questions?
Two, five, yeah, do whatever you need.
All right. You can start the clock now.
I just don't want to get into all these esoteric numbers that have no meaning to anybody, so tell us what we want to know.
All right. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, for the record, your name is Stephen Purnor with Purnor and Company, and we'll fill that out later. We did the traffic impact assessment for this project, and we started by meeting with city staff. This is back in April. We talked about the parameters of the study. They wanted us to research available data, go out and do traffic counts for what's happening today, and then do 10-year projections for what we expect is going to happen 10 years into the future. Real quick, the latest DOT count shows that the annual average daily traffic volume, 7,000 plus cars a day. By the way, if you look in our appendix, it's historical data, the last four or five years, the number still starts with seven, 7,000. So traffic really hasn't been growing a lot. In 2020, it's down because of the pan... In 2020, it's down because of the pandemic, and we took that into account in our projections. Crash data, I heard concerns about safety or whatever. Your police department tells us there were two crashes reported at the Cine Section from 2018 to 2020. We did projections again for the future, 10-year projections, we made adjustments for COVID. In terms of what the site is gonna generate, and this kinda goes to your question, I'm not talking people, I'm talking vehicles, morning peak hour, 116 outs, 64 in, so that's primarily residents is leaving, office people coming in.
So 116 vehicles will come out of Langdon Avenue onto South Main, what's the timeframe?
On, on a, over a one-hour period, typically 7:30 to 8:30. And then they're gonna split, the majority are gonna be a right-turn departure, 57% I believe, and then the rest heads to the south, down to the, down to the interstate. The evening peak hour, it's actually a little bit less. We have 64 heading out, people leaving the offices, 98 coming in over that one-hour period. So the net change on, on South Main Street, worst case would be to the north of the intersection, an 11% increase during that PM peak hour.
And that's, that's the full, that's the fully developed project, right?
Fully developed project, worst-case PM peak hour. When we look at intersection capacity, again, we put all our numbers in, and it tells us that the intersection is gonna operate below capacity through the year 2032, with the development fully occupied. That's the good news, I can say the volume is less than the capacity, or demand is less than capacity. The bad news is, if you're gonna take a left turn out, you know you're gonna have to wait for that adequate gap. But the analysis shows us that, that there are enough adequate safe gaps to make that left-turn departure or right-turn departure. So that's good, there will be an increase in queuing, stacking on the minor approach by plus-two vehicles. We did look at the need for turn lanes, and I, I heard the discussion earlier about, you know, when you first open it, you don't meet the criteria. If we look at 2032, full build-out, yes, you meet the criteria for left-turn treatment, that's southbound left turns into, into the minor approach, or the minor street. Just a couple things on that, the criteria or the analysis we use is DOT requirement, we use it everywhere, comes from NCHRP 457, and it is a very easy criteria to meet. We, I'm gonna say, nine out of 10 times when we run the analysis, it says, oh, yep, you need a left turn lane. There are alternatives, one was discussed, and we presented it in a report, is the bypass shoulder situation. Today, if you are taking a left and you're a passenger car, through traffic will go around you, that's a fact. Is it textbook? No. You know, what would be better is to have a little bit more room. But, so it does function today as a bypass lane. I suppose you could say the Cadillac would be a turnpocket, and again, this is what's being discussed with the city, but, you know, there's disadvantages too, because now that takes away maneuverability for other vehicles exiting to the right. So it's something, I think, you know, the city and the applicant need to weigh the advantages and disadvantages and, and, and take it from there. In terms of, again, no right turn lane needed for northbound vehicles entering and exiting, the one exit lane is, is sufficient. And the only recommendations we had is there really ought to be a stop sign on the Langdon Approach to South Main Street, maybe there was one there, but there isn't now.
There's not a stop sign there?
And, and.
One of those damn buses probably took it out.
Exactly. Exactly. And, and that's the kind of treatment you need at the site drive-ways, leaving the office and leaving the residential street, stop, stop sign, stop line, and a short section of double-yellow line just to separate inbound and outbound vehicles.
So your analysis doesn't show the need for a stop light at that intersection?
Oh, that's right, thank you. Not even close, I mean, we didn't even analyze it because you're not even close. It's, you, you need a lot more traffic on both South Main Street and coming out of Langdon.
So you realize the residents are gonna hiss you unmercifully if you walk back down?
I have parked down by the.
Okay, just like, don't, don't try to go on South Main when you leave town. At 50 miles an hour.
All I have to call is a spade a spade.
There's no speed analysis in your pieces there, it was just, it was just counting?
No, we did not.
Question?
Yes.
Just, in your, in your analysis, we, I heard the need for a crosswalk, because this, this complex is gonna have a lot of kids trying to get to school, and they have to cross that street somewhere. Does your, any of that come into you when you do your snapshot? Do you have, do you see that there has to be a crosswalk somewhere?
The answer's no, I mean, we, there, there are no criteria where I could look up in a chart and say, oh, you don't need one today, but you will in the future. You know, I mean, you asked me, is it a good idea? That's like saying apple pie, right? I mean, I suppose it's always better to, to have a crosswalk than not. Somebody mentioned here earlier about a mid-block crossing. You know, if this was mid-block and you weren't at an intersection, I would probably advise against a crosswalk because people kinda take the liberty, oh, I have a right to cross here, and they're not as careful. But you're dealing with kids, I have no idea what that number is, so I, I can't.
I would assume this complex is gonna have to, a lot of children, I gotta believe that.
What we found in a lot of areas where we've done this, and we've done studies with it, that we don't get a lot, most of them are reloes within the town itself, so the, the burden on the school system is extremely low. And then the numbers are inherently low as well, because when you get a one-bedroom, you know, or 50, you're not gonna have the kids. So then you start looking at the twos, it's now, you'll have hit or miss, and it's not as high as you would think it would be.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, the last thing I wanted to, to leave with you, Chris's office asked us to draw up a little sketch of what a left turn pocket would look like, and, and we did that, and we gave it to his office, and you're dealing with several hundred feet of, of road improvements and probably an overlay. And early tonight, I heard that the city is gonna be making an improvement on that corridor anyway in the future. So my question is, why doesn't this applicant be generous and offer to do his fair share and make a contribution to the future city project?
That's a good question.
And I don't have the answer.
Who hired him?
Leaves you with that, a monkey just jumped right off the back right onto yours.
Yeah, I know.
Thank you very much for your testimony.
We still had just two other comments, not for traffic, done, over.
No, you're good, you're good.
She's shooing you, you're being shooed.
Get him away from the.
Jeff, Jeff is horrified over there, but go ahead.
And just quickly, like, and you don't have to really respond, but I'm, I'm very concerned about the, the, the buffer, the density between the development and the marsh, and also for the benefit of the residents in, in the development, the buffer with the industrial use across the tracks, that I don't think what you've done is sufficient, but people who live there might think it's not sufficient, so. Those are concerns that I have.
Duly noted. Okay, anything else? Beth? No? Nothing else? Okay. So just before we close the public hearing, I just, I just wanna make sure that people understand that we've got five units, six, six buildings?
Six.
Six buildings. Six buildings on a, on a diverse piece of property in, in the city limits, and you guys have one waiver request and one CUP, which is just about unheard of in this type of a development. Usually, we're seeing waivers for this, waivers for this, waivers for this, you know, conditional use permits for all kinds of different things, waiving all these requirements for different things. So you've, you've shoehorned in a project in some cases, but you've also given, I think, a lot of space, a lot of open space in the middle, a lot of thought as to, as to how far the, you know, the property reaches in and, and goes around. So, you know, again, I understand that, not in my backyard, and I understand all that process, but we're looking at it, the planning board looks at it and says, okay, do we like it, don't we like it? And then, do we grant the waivers, do we grant the conditional use permits? And we can't just say, no, we don't like this project because we heard a lot of testimony tonight that says it's, it's not a good project. We look at the project and say, here's a project that's been presented, here are the positives, here are the negatives, here's architectural design review, the way they reviewed it, here's all of the, the big picture things that are brought to bear as far as the project goes, and we make a decision based on that. So I, I applaud you guys for working with the city, I know you guys have done a lot of work with the city, so.
We appreciate that, and I applaud working with the city, so you had the planning department, as well as the architectural review board, were, you know, very thorough and very to the point, so it makes my life a lot easier in that respect.
One more question.
Sure.
Speed bumps or knockouts for, I had, I had somebody, somebody had made some test, had some testimony regarding wide-open drag racing, and I wrote, I wrote down speed bumps with a question mark.
I did the same thing, I wrote that down, but it's something I had to go back and talk, you know, from.
Again, plowing, and I get it, I understand, but just either bump outs or maybe some, some, some traffic calming, bike storage as well?
We have bike racks at each entrance, at the main entrance of each of the buildings for that, and majority of the bikes, you know, people would store them in their apartments anyways, in most cases.
Okay. Any other questions? No? Yep.
And just, based, you know, off of what Rich just said, you meet all of the zoning requirements for the site.
Again, unusual.
You meet all the zoning requirements, did you even get any variances? You had no variances, meet every single zoning requirement, almost every, other than the waiver for the stuff that DES won't even allow you to do anyway, and to reduce parking, which we always encourage. Like, I don't even know what the base is from a legal perspective, of, to justify any recommendation of denial would be, from a legal perspective and a regulatory perspective, just to put a, find a point on what you were saying about.
Yeah, and I'm sensitive to the fact that, that people don't like it, but, but, and our hands are not tied by any stretch, but we take all this feedback and we look for the public testimony to, to have you guys think about things like traffic calming and, 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 and speed bumps, or, you know, the different things that we had asked during the process. But there's not a, again, shockingly little that, that is, is a variance or something that's required for us to look at for, for a denial on those grounds, so.
I got two pages of notes.
Two pages of notes, good, well, that's what you want, you'll be a good neighbor if you're gonna get this through, so. One more, one more ask of anybody for questions before we public, close the public hearing? Okay, so we'll close the public hearing, we'll send you guys back, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And again, you guys thought you were gonna get in and out of here quick, it's 10:56. Matt?
Can we start big picture, I think, for people so that they know? This is in the opportunity corridor. This is an area that the city, you know, for a long time, and this stretches all the way up where, to the conference center, Republican Conference Center? So this is an area, that, it's a difficult situation, folks, because it borders a residential zone, and these are always difficult. But like Heather said, legally, there has to be a reason for denial, and they meet absolutely everything. So big picture here is that you don't have to like it, but it's really difficult to deny something like this when they meet all the zoning, and this is future development in this corridor. And so it's just a really tough situation for those of you who live on South Main, and I lived in South End for 13 years, so I understand it, and I understand how difficult it is for you, but this is the situation we're in.
Hey, I live in the South End, I come down Allison Street and try to turn left or right onto South Main every single day. And again, it could be that the metal crunching people could be over on the other side of the, of the, of the, of the tracks and be right there as well, so.
I win, I live two blocks away from this development.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, and there's some other issues here, sorry, I was going through my notes. Crossing the tracks, you know, putting a road across that is incredibly problematic. All the land on the other side is probably privately owned.
It is.
I don't think the city owns any land, so there's no opportunity to have a, a street that goes across the tracks and onto Hall Street. The best that you could get is a street that goes north underwater street. In future years, which may help.
But again, secondary access is for emergencies, and those are the things for public safety and for life, life safety, the fire department and code have got that, and that's not our purview to, to question, to question that, so.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
What else? Yep, anything else?
Well, I guess, having listened to the public testimony, there's a great concern about the marsh, and I don't think that the development has done enough to kinda mitigate that impact on the neighborhood and on the marsh. So I think we could ask, that could be an ask that goes along with it. I guess I'm less concerned about, you know, the quality of life for the people who live there as far as the industrial site across the railroad track, but that would be their choice, but I don't think that that was really addressed. And certainly the safety of crossing, and if, on Loudon Road, they have a couple of pedestrian-activated crossing lights that are in the middle, that I think I've seen, I've had to stop because a lot of people use it when they're going back and forth, and if it's only in the mornings, if the kids are going to school and on the way back, I think we have to really be serious about the safety issues of crossing that road. And, you know, I mean, it's just like contaminating the marsh, and so if there's a way to monitor the kinds of materials that they use for snow plowing and ice, then we make sure that they're not using the dangerous stuff.
I think the, go ahead.
I'm just, you know, I, I listen to that and I appreciate that, but I'm thinking of what was there 50 years ago, and what was draining into that marsh 50 years ago, and I don't see that this development is going to be worse than that. What I see is a vast improvement on what was there historically.
Yeah, and I, 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 I agree with you, and I, I would, I don't wanna put anything in regarding the, the, the addressing the marsh issue, I think they've addressed it with the, the snow remediation as far as putting it into the retention ponds, treating it, flushing it back through the system the way it needs to be flushed, so I think that's fine. The pedestrian crossing idea from, from Loudon Road is an excellent one, and one that, I don't know if we can, if there's any opportunities to, to kinda give staff some leeway on that, or Jeff, you wanna weigh in on that?
I have a couple things on that intersection. I, one thing is, I would say is, I would not wanna push this construction of those safety improvements out to a future project, because as we all know, as the gentleman said, when the money's tight, something's gotta go.
Yep.
And if South Main Street gets pushed back another five years, another seven years, another eight years, the residents in this area and the people going in and out of there would still have to deal with that intersection. So I think it is reasonable to ask the developer to put that in as part of their project. Now, I understand.
Put what in?
The left turn lane, the pocket, whatever length that engineering works with them to develop. I think there should be some sort of possibility for an enhanced crosswalk. Not necessarily as much of a fan of what Loudon Road has for the types of signals. Couple options could be the rectangular rapid flashing beacon that has the flashing lights on both sides, at least warn drivers when somebody is wanting to cross the roadway, that could be a possibility. If you're gonna go with a full pedestrian-type car stop condition, then I would suggest it's something more like is down at Capone, which is the hybrid beacon. That is a better, gives a, that, having what's on Loudon Road with the green balls and everything gets people confused a lot of times, and I've seen a lot of cars go right through those, even when the light goes yellow or red, because they're focused further on. So those are some things that certainly could be considered and talked about among the staff, but I think those should be some, and I think that the developer should kind of look at those, what, what is kinda that threshold in staff as well, is if suddenly they flip the phases and the two office buildings come first, they're not phase one and two, but maybe there's a trigger of when that left turn lane gets built. It's not tied to a specific phase, but it's more, more traffic volumes or something associated with that phase.
Well, the second phase, no matter what they do, so.
Well, it may not be the same, maybe phase one ends up being four buildings because the economics are there and the tenants are there and whatever. I think it should be more tied to something traffic-related and not just necessarily a building phase.
Aren't the phases pretty well-defined?
Yes.
Yeah.
I mean, they could do them, they could request.
Yeah, they could, they'd have to come back to the planning board, so that's when we could say.
And that's fine, as long as there's a mechanism, so if something changes.
Yeah, they'd have to come back to planning board, and at that point, we could require that they do the offsite improvements as part of that. Yeah, the way that we recommended it, to have those improvements done as part, prior to completion of phase one, is. Phase two. Prior to, sorry, keep doing that. Completion of phase two is, that, that kind of addresses all the issues, you know, before they can get their CO, their final CO for phase two, it has to be done. That's when the traffic warrants are, that's when the warrant is triggered.
And that's, and I just wanted to make sure that if they came back with a different development plan. And that's, and I just wanted to make sure that if they came back with a different development plan, that that's looked at again and addressed. That's all I'm concerned about.
Absolutely would.
Okay, anything else? All right, let's move back in our agenda, painful as that is, to 7E. So Dakota Partners, on behalf of P and M Realty of Concord LLC, requests major subdivision approval to create land condominium units on property off Langdon Avenue in the Opportunity Corridor. In your report, you'll see item 3.1 to grant major condominium subdivision approval for the proposed condominium subdivision of Langdon Avenue in the Gateway Performance Corridor, urban transition, medium density, medium density residential and residential open space districts. Within one year prior to endorsement of the final plans by the planning board chair and clerk, with conditions set for one through six and then six A, B, and C. Would someone like to make a motion to grant major condominium subdivision approval as outlined?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's made in second. It all is in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That motion carries. So the subdivision is set and moved to item 7F, which is the Dakota Partners, on behalf of P and M Realty of Concord LLC, requests major site plan approval for a mixed use development consisting of 192 multifamily units and six residential structures, a clubhouse, and two pad sites for future development. Also requested is a conditional use permit, CUP, to allow for construction of fewer parking spaces that are required for property off of Langdon Avenue in the Opportunity Corridor Performance District. We have a waiver for, we have a waiver for, wait a minute. We have a waiver for, I can't remember.
Stormwater separation.
No, no, we got a waiver for something else too, a funny one that we needed to add.
Oh, the credit?
The credit.
That is, it's not a waiver.
Not a waiver, I'm sorry.
Nope.
How do we want to handle that, that credit? Where do you want to put it in?
So part of the subsequent conditions, we talk about the payment of the impact fees.
Yeah.
So we can.
Put it in there?
Put it in there. So there is a note in there that says any credits against blah, blah, blah will be approved by the clerk of the board. I think if you approve that subsequent condition, that covers that.
Okay, so we're good with that. Okay. All right, so let's move right into the.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Where are we with that? Where on this?
Under subsequent, so 8.4.
Yeah.
B, it's the last page, six. There's a, where it talks about.
Okay, thank you.
And then there's a bold thing.
So any credits against transportation facilities fee shall be approved by the clerk of the board. The applicant will be responsible for any impact fees above the amount of the credit if approved. Right?
Yep.
Okay, so we got a bunch here. So 8.1 is to grant the following waiver to the site plan regulations utilizing the criteria of RSA 674441 and 2, which state that strict conformity would pose unnecessary hardship, and that is section 22073 to allow the volume of offsite discharge after project development to exceed the volume of discharge before development for the 10-year storm subject to the applicant providing additional information confirming that Hampshire Department of Environmental Services and Alteration of Terrain support the information provided by the applicant regarding infiltration. My goodness. So would someone like to make a motion to grant that waiver?
I'll make the motion to grant the waiver.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. It all is in favor.
Aye.
Opposed. That motion carries. 8.2 is to grant the conditional use permit in accordance with section 28711B, construction of fewer parking spaces of the zoning ordinance to construct fewer parking spaces than are required. Someone like to make a motion to grant that conditional use permit?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. It all is in favor.
Aye.
Opposed. That motion carries. 8.3 is to grant ADR approval as follows, approval of the layout materials for residential use is submitted with the selection, with the suggestion to look at additional entrances into the courtyard. We've addressed that for each building and to look at the lighting plan again. So there'll be some additional administrative look at the lighting plan for approval of layout and architectural components. I'm not going to read all those. So we've got 8.3 to grant ADR approval. Would someone like to make a motion?
Can I, yeah, I just, so do you want to take the property owner requested to remove that condition that they have to return to ADR? And I didn't know if you wanted to. So essentially by approving this, they have to come back to ADR and the planning board, no matter what?
For.
For the commercial development.
I would say.
Yeah, I would like to see him come back to the.
I just wanted to make sure that you address that because that was a request that was.
I mean, we don't have anything on that other than just speculation on what's going to be there and how it's going to look, so. So grant ADR approval. Am I okay just saying that grant ADR approval?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that you.
Has outlined. Okay. 8.3, would someone like to make a motion to grant ADR approval as outlined?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. It all is in favor.
Aye.
Opposed. That motion carries. And 8.4 is to grant major site plan approval for the proposed multi-phase mixed-use development at Langdon Avenue subject to the following precedent and subsequent conditions. And those are outlined in precedent conditions one through eight and subsequent conditions, one, two, three, four, five, and six. And again, with recommendations on the, with a nod to the credit that's outlined and bold at the bottom.
Is there anything that was discussed that we want to make a condition?
I don't think there was anything other than.
My only comment was that I, I do think they should provide the evergreen shrubs around the parking area to separate sidewalks from the parking. But I don't know if there were any other site issues that we wanted to make conditions.
I'd like them to do more of a buffer by the marsh.
What kind of buffer? What do you mean by buffer?
Like, well, they said, they, they testified that there weren't a lot of, you know, like a canopy. And so there's no reason why they couldn't just have a beef up the buffer between the developed area and the marsh.
Tree buffer, like a.
Yeah, well, yeah, because if, especially like the visual impact of the people that have been looking at it. And if it's a tree that's going to get 30 feet tall someday, it will impact the size. I mean, they're three-story, four-story.
Yeah, I think I just wanted you to be like a buffer. They have a buffer.
Vegetative buffer.
Right.
Well, no, they've got space, but they don't have it planted.
So we're talking. You want it to be a canopy tree buff, because our ordinance, a buffer can be a variety of different things.
I would say not, not shrubs. I would say a buffer.
There's three different kinds of buffers in our ordinance.
So how about a mixture of evergreens and, and mostly canopy trees? Well, they don't even have a lot of evergreens there anyway. I don't think. So just do like the appropriate shade trees.
So to be clear, we're talking about planting in the shoreline protection district.
But that's.
No.
No, that's my question. There's already a setback, right? They don't own.
They own it.
They own it. They own the setback. So what can they plant?
You can plant in it.
Yes, you can plant in it. But I just wanted to make sure that we're clear that we're talking about.
Whether it grows or not, that's the question.
It will.
Mangroves?
Mangroves.
Well, there, there's, it's, I mean, they would plant it in an area where they would grow, obviously, but enhance the buffer. It could be on their property or on the edge of the property. I don't care.
One of the reasons that there's not, that what's there is there is probably because of the, of the marsh and the wetlands and the the natural habitat of the area. Am I speaking out of touch?
So then maybe we could ask them to do it on their land, on the dry land.
We could ask them to put stuff in there, but is that stuff, is it, you know, what type of stuff is going to actually grow there where stuff's not growing there now because of what it is?
So isn't there space between that and the buildings because they have to kind of raise the topography for, to cover the area anyway? There's nothing between the buildings?
It's pretty much building, parking, shoreline protection district.
So they could just add to the landscaping along the parking? Because they have to do that anyway, but not have them like 40 feet apart.
We got to make room for snow storage in that area because that's where they're going to be pushing snow.
They don't have to do it in only one place. I'm sure there's another place they could do it.
Right.
Anyway, could you figure it out?
Is there any space between the parking and the shoreline protection or is it pretty much? It's pretty much right to the edge, but I mean, we can look at it. We can look at the vegetation.
I just think it would be.
So to the greatest extent possible.
You should not skimp on the landscape.
To the greatest extent possible. Perfect.
Yeah, thank you.
Perfect.
Mr. Chairman, I think the only other thing I had asked is them to work with staff about a turning radius for the right hand out of Langdon.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's good.
Yep.
And then just one thing, we had put in precedent condition number three was to provide an additional entrance. So if you don't want to make that a condition, you can strike that based on testimony tonight or if you want.
Yeah, I do want to strike that. We'd heard, we'd heard, we'd heard.
I agree.
Enough testimony regarding that. So we'll strike precedent condition three out of that. We'll add the condition that Suzanne mentioned regarding vegetated buffer and a note to work with staff on the right-hand turning radius out of the, out of the parking lot.
And do you want Heather's parking lot? But evergreen shrubs.
Yes, and evergreen.
No, not out of the parking lot, from.
Out of the, out of the, out of Langdon, sorry.
We know, we know what you mean. Yep, we've got it recorded. We can.
Okay, so would someone like to, would someone like to make a motion to grant major site plan approval for that with those precedent conditions and subsequent conditions as we've outlined?
So moved. Second.
Motion's been made in second. It all is in favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. You are all set. And again, thank you for your public testimony. Are we good? Everything's good? Dot of the I's, cross the T's. Thank you, everyone, for your testimony. And we'll go to the.
Clarify for the motion in the second, please.
We had a motion by Matt, a second by David Fox. Thank you for your testimony. Appreciate it. Let's move on to the last item on our agenda tonight. 8G, 7G.
Alex, 7G is Alex Velis, on behalf of ROI Irrevocable Trust, requesting comprehensive development plan approval for a mixed residential and commercial development consisting of five multifamily buildings and a combined gas station, car wash, sandwich shop, and convenience store in phase one and an assisted living facility, independent living townhomes, grocery store, medical office building, restaurant, and bank with drive-through service in subsequent phases in the Gateway Performance District. So just to clarify, there are no approvals being sought tonight. There's a traffic study that was scoped that is in the process. Don't make them come up here.
Oh, they don't? Well, you don't have to come up.
No, they don't have to come up. They can if they want. Just to clarify.
Give me something to look at.
So a traffic study isn't being completed now. That needs to be completed, needs to be reviewed. There are other conversations after that traffic study occurs that we will continue to have with the applicant. That, so when they, when they submitted the comprehensive development plan, it was really just to start that process going. And, and so we all anticipate additional changes to, to the plan.
Right. And again, I don't think there's anybody left that wasn't here at the beginning of the meeting, but the monitor did report that this was, you know, this was on the agenda for tonight and made it kind of sound like the, this was the, this was the project. This is just kind of the planning and, you know, get it out in the open, give us some updated plans because the ones that they showed in the paper weren't right, but give us some updated plans and then kind of get the ball rolling and moving it forward. So do we, we don't really need Ari to do anything as far as the presentation piece. How do you want to handle it?
We, we, first of all, Ari, do you, do you want to say anything or?
Well, I always have something to say, right? So let me, let me just say I'm Ari Pollock with the Gallagher Firm here for the ROI Irrevocable Trust, the landowner applicant and developer. And, and just in terms of putting faces with the project behind me in the gallery is Dick Knoll, the longtime landowner, and Alex Velis, his development representative. And what's before you is a comprehensive development plan application. It's essentially a, a master plan for a multi-use project which is actually going to be placed upon seven assembled parcels off of Manchester Street and Black Hill Road.
I can't get the password.
I don't, I don't, I don't need any of that. And the, the plan is facilitated by a rezoning that was presented to this board in 2019 for recommendations to the city council, and then the rezoning was approved. We then had something called the COVID pandemic and took a bit of a timeout, but we're back. So all of what Heather said is correct. We're, we're just getting started on the CDP submission. We'd, we'd love for you to make a finding of completeness, to find that there's no regional impact as was recommended by staff and then push us off to a subsequent meeting for a public hearing. And in the meantime, we're going to continue our work on a scoped traffic study, which our consultants at TF Moran have, have already launched. And we're going to continue our conversations with city planning and engineering on various items in their memos.
Great.
He just made your, he just did your motion for you.
I know, I just got to say.
I always have something to say.
I agree, yeah. Any conversation, any questions, anything, anybody wants to bring up? Suzanne?
So, yeah, I guess I'm just trying to figure out, what is it that we can express or not and we have time to do that?
Well, I don't know if we need to express anything only in that they've kind of, it's almost like a determination of completeness piece, but it's a little bit, a little bit more than that. Just kind of a, hey, this is a big project. I mean, there's a lot of impact. There's a lot of, a lot of things going on, a lot of moving parts. And I think that's, it's probably premature to have it on the agenda, but it's certainly, we want to get it in front of people and let them see the real thing as opposed to.
Well, I mean, I guess what I was noticing, I think there's some conflict of uses, like where the, it's a shame that more residences aren't by the open space and that the grocery store is there and the back of it's towards the open space because there's not a lot of open space visually or otherwise. So that was my concern about some of the arrangement of what was going on in there and of course the amount of parking, but.
We, we certainly can, can get into those details now or later.
No, later's fine.
Well, just to respond quickly, the, the idea was to try to get some of that residential near the riverway. I mean, this, this whole intent here is to activate what has become a, a hidden gem, if you will. And, and there's a lot going on on that site. A lot even beyond the planning process that complicates the development scenario, but it's, it's really an amazing opportunity to activate what has been a somewhat neglected area of the city.
Not arguing that.
Yeah.
No, not arguing.
Well, but the idea was to put the residential near, near the water.
Well, I know, but you do have some on that side, on the opposite side. Not all of it. There's some on the other side.
Correct.
But there might be ways of actually closing some of those gaps to allow them to have more access to that open space. Because with the supermarket too, it's so close to residential, you're going to have the deliveries at night, you're going to have the beeping of the dumpsters. So it's a bigger conflict with the, so I was just thinking it might be nice to look to see if there's a better place for it on the site.
And your comment actually is very timely because a, a lot of the placement of uses will depend on the traffic work that's happening now. And I, I wouldn't encourage this group to get too wedded to supermarket. That might be the thing that doesn't fit.
Right.
So it, the pieces are still moving around. So it's, it's a timely comment. The only other thing I, I should have said, Mr. Chairman, is the comprehensive development plan is an overlay of mixture of uses and where we want to put what. But it certainly does not detract from our requirement to do a site plan review for each phase of the project. And, and we know that's ahead of us. And we have not filed anything in that regard at this point.
Five, six phases?
I don't think it'll be that many. I think it's, for example, the first phase is intended to be the multifamily residential and the gas convenience sandwich user on, on Manchester Street.
Okay.
So that'll be two uses coming in one phase.
Okay, any other questions? We will recognize that we'll define the application complete. Do we have to do a determination of completeness?
Yep, determination of completeness, not a development of regional impact and postpone.
Set the public hearing for.
Not postpone the public hearing to no date certain.
Okay, so we have before us a deter, no date certain.
No date certain.
So determination of completeness component, so we need a motion to find the application complete. That not a development of regional impact and set the public hearing for no certain date, a no date, no determined date, no, no date certain.
So moved.
Motion's been made in second. It all is in favor.
Aye.
Opposed. That motion carries.
Look forward to the bonding experience.
Experience.
Look forward to the bonding experience we are going to have.
As am I. Thank you, Eric.
Okay.
Not quite sure what you have in mind, but I'm looking forward to it.
That brings us to the end of our agenda mercifully.
I know.
11:23. This is the longest we've done in a long time. Okay, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. If someone would like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. It all is in favor.
Aye.
Opposed. We are adjourned. Thank you very much, everyone. Thank you for your long time, your effort.
That was easy.
Monitor's going to yell.